We're nice going out.
Oh, say that. On the same show, Sam. I don't see other companies like her and I don't have CPS. They tell me that I'm small, they follow down the other end. But I was tall because of the way the weight is in there is actually almost in the opposite of what I was. Hi, how are you?
I'm good.
Good, good. Doing well. Good to see you. Yeah, I do.
Yeah, because he's one always saying all that for me and said, okay, he's only two minutes.
Well, one of the things that we said is we have got a inspector that's thorough and fair and I appreciate him. Okay. Okay. We've got good things to say.
It's good to see you outside with a raincoat on. I think we're missing one cat. Yeah, we think you might need to pull him down.
Do you need me to?
No.
It's okay. Pretty nice.
Actually know if you'll notice they shift.
Yeah, I checked that.
Yeah. And so. This is actually. When they're in session. I mean, he didn't go big, he must have been proud of it. He's got some. Um, do you want to? We're giving a case until it has paid. Yes, yes, I know. I was. Yes, I know.
Did I keep them over? Well, it said don't go over five. I was like, do you want to? I will give back, get back there. It's mine. So probably won't be staffed about over that trying to answer that question. So will they pass you?
Yes. From our most likely, yes, to make something right. Talking about anything else, people forget. So sometimes we. Oh, no. Maybe it's why I can't take it to that one. Oh, maybe you can even. Maybe you're just. Yeah. Leave that before. At least your parents. Very good to see you again.
I'll just go through the session. I don't want to lose more. You know, for some. Did you?
Maybe. Oh, great.
Um, they caught me off guard. I thought. They.
Yeah.
If you're listening. That's good. Sorry, I was being hard that. Stressing. That I love. Still making this. I mean. I didn't tell them. My body tells. Were you seeing? I mean, you know.
The team. Boris did run. I didn't really know that, but. All the. Those ten goes in a small part. Except for. In my. Where's the? Six. And.
You're using.
I like it. No, you just stand. That's all.
Well.
Yeah. He hasn't used it. Yeah, so since it didn't.
Man, those, those, that whole system, how that goes about is fascinating. You know, that's how Dustin got it, dude. He won three votes and he got that frequent seat.
And this is for the seat, Boris's seat. This is the first time we've seen this many dollars.
It's been four years because he got.
It really was, but you know, I don't think anybody anticipated when they wrote the law. But, but, yeah, it's crazy. He's going to do fine. What Colin was telling you. The fact that, that, I think the average of any senator out of that here is serving in the legislature for twenty seven years. And he's that one person. That's the part that really, I'm gonna tell you, this part I did like.
Yeah.
Because.
Now that's off the table forever.
Yeah, because you raised enough to keep.
Yeah.
Oh, you had to do something.
Yep. But that always, that doesn't even always.
No, that's right. So, you know, I'm glad it's over. Because, you know, I just go ahead. It made me think a lot about why I'm here and what I'm doing. But you know, whenever you start looking inside yourself, it's pretty nuts.
Tell me about it.
Yeah. Yes. Um, if I could just have some water, I think about caffeine now. And I'm sure.
Underneath.
Go underneath.
Just water.
Chairman, how are you?
Thank you.
John Breton, Washington County Judge.
Oh, hello. Really.
Glad to be here. Glad you're here.
Oh, it's our great. It's our great. We got a good opportunity to learn more about, uh, the, the, the whole state. And it's good to be, be here and so far so good because I.
There you go.
How are you?
But it's really nice to see the campus.
Okay. Yes, yes, wonderful.
Hey, how you doing? John Breton. I'm Washington County Judge.
Okay, hey, good to meet you.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
How you doing, John?
Yes, sir, John Breton.
Nice to see you.
I'm on your email list.
Oh, thank you. It's a good deal. Thank you for having us here. We're excited to be here.
Absolutely.
Good deal.
Nice to meet you.
This is what happens and can't get over. Don't ever get physically limited.
Tarrant County.
And that, I don't know. I guess you have to come up through that hole. I like.
I got Bluetooth and I'm just, you know, whatever. How you doing?
John.
How you doing? Thank y'all for showing. Thank you so much.
I'm not going to wait too long to put you on the chair.
Okay. We'll just let you know. I had to do it.
Hey, you doing all right? Oh, cool. Thanks for being here. Hello, how are you? Excellent, thanks for participating. Yeah, she does a good job. That's, that's the secret.
Katie keeps us all in line on this. Which is not an easy job, but with this group. Well, it's, that's one of the nicer ways to say what we're called sometimes. Everything's good, man. Yeah. We, um, we ran down there, um, we'll be back again. We'll give you a holler next time down there and do it, man. So, yeah, we're, we try to get down as much as possible, okay? I love that part of the country. Yeah, it'd be nice, wouldn't it? And it'd just be a cool thing, man. You know, we're trying to fix it, that'd be great. Got your stop, one stop shop, man, just go good after.
He says, this is what I need, and I said, okay, I'll make it.
Well, also, I really want to make sure that the regions get a chance to have a say in front of the committee, but also that the members get a chance to. Read their, um, own people.
Yeah. I, I can't complain one bit. I don't know if we told y'all, but we're about to have our first child. Two weeks from Monday is the due date. So we're excited, man. Um, so we're having a little boy and, uh, I'm gonna be walking around like a zombie for most of August, so you know how that goes. But it's gonna be good. It's gonna be good, so. Yeah, wherever, they'll probably call you up to testify at one of those places there.
Looks like the podium is the only place.
Yeah, looks like the podium might be the only testifying place, so. Yeah.
Which is fun.
Yeah, that's fine. Y'all have a seat wherever and we'll call it up. Thank you, guys.
With the Committee on County Affairs come to order and clerk, will you call the roll?
Bowman.
Here.
Uh huh.
Here.
Schubert.
Present.
Stick by me.
Here.
A quorum is not present, but a quorum is not needed for interim hearings and the committee will proceed with the business as scheduled. Uh, today, the committee will hear from local experts and officials regarding Child Protective Services, uh, the eleven fifteen transformation waiver, county cybersecurity, and criminal justice issues. Uh, if you plan to testify, many of you have already done this, please be sure to fill out the witness affirmation forms located in the back of the room. Uh, I want to thank Blinn College for hosting us today and Representative Schubert for allowing us to visit his district. Uh, this hearing is especially important. It is the only hearing being held in an area of Texas that is predominantly rural. County resources and programs vary drastically across the state. Therefore, it is important to hear from counties of all sizes to ensure that legislators provide proper tools in order for counties to effectively serve their communities without placing undue financial burdens on them. Uh, members, are there any opening remarks? And I have a few housekeeping things, well, I can do it at the end, but we did now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just like to welcome the committee and my colleagues to Brenham, Texas. It's a special part of the world, um, special place for us. I'm the fifth generation resident on both sides of my family of this area and great to have you all here. I think this is the first time there's ever been a, a house hearing in Brenham, Texas. So we're making history here, guys. Thank y'all. Um, and definitely want to welcome everybody and thank everybody for coming out and taking the time out of their day to join us today. Thank you so much.
I just want to say thank you for having us and it's very clear, this gentleman, uh, I've seen him on the House floor fight specifically for this district and local issues and, uh, thank you for having us out here. And I apologize for missing the Blue Bell tour earlier this morning. It's not that I don't like Blue Bell, it might be that I like it too much. So, thank you. Good to be here.
Well, again, thank you for, for hosting. Uh, you know, we get to know about the state by going to different places, uh, in the state. The point of view that someone has is from their overall perspective and we don't get to see it from somebody else's perspective. I've driven by Brenham probably, I don't know how many times, but I've never been to Brenham. So I, I remember a guy told me, he said, you know, when you live in a big city, you get on the freeway and you pass neighborhoods, but you think you know the neighborhoods, but nobody ever gets out and goes through them. So they're just a pass by on a drive. Uh, and so it's very important that all points of view, but also points of view that, that are particular to, uh, populated, places that have low, you know, small population centers. Um, so that, that's one good reason, other, you know, that we were coming to your district, uh, for being here. Uh, the, the other part is that County Affairs is kind of a weird committee. Uh, we have jurisdiction over so many things. Uh, and if a county touches it, we, we have jurisdiction on it. And, and so that gives us a wide variety of topics that we look at in oversight. So again, from county jails to healthcare, um, and from, uh, you know, issues in places that can't do ordinance that cities can do, uh, to, uh, again, if the, the two different economic development, uh, opportunities. So, uh, with that, we're gonna go through a varied group of, uh, charges that don't have anything to do with each other. Uh, and most committees would not have this mortgage board of, of things that they would hear because they're specific to different, different topics. Also, just in case some people leave early, I, I wanted to let, let you all know that in September, we are going to have our joint committee hearing with Crim, Criminal Juris Prudence. Uh, there's been a lot in the news lately and I think that everyone is, has, has great issues. Today, we'll talk about how, uh, county jails operate and, uh, how we can be helpful to county jails in the next session. Uh, we know that, that there, the populations in, in jails, particularly among people who have mental illness is a real issue in the state and still is. Um, and we want to make sure that we give everybody, uh, a hearing on those issues, but I thought I'd give you some time, you know, to think about that. So when we do that criminal juror hearing, uh, that people understand that it's, it's intended to be balanced, it's intended to solve problems, uh, it's, it's a charge from the speaker. Uh, so, you know, we, we're gonna have to do that, but it'll be done in the fall. Okay, so I don't, no one should, should worry in any way, uh, but I think because of the, the tensions, I just didn't want to say, oh, spring it, that we're gonna go back into our, uh, criminal justice, uh, areas. Uh, and that, again, people can be prepared, um, and answer questions. So the only thing we're doing today is see if we, on criminal justice, is to see whether jails need, jail, uh, standards needs more people and to do their job. And, uh, so that's who we're starting with. Okay. The opening, who, we didn't say who. Okay, why, why don't you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd be remiss, since we're here at the wonderful Blinn facility, not to introduce Dr. Mary Hensley and ask her to come up and give us some welcoming remarks from Blinn College.
Thank you so much. I'm Mary Hensley, I'm District President of Blinn College, and it's a joyous occasion for you to be here today and I'm privileged to welcome you, the entire committee this morning, to, uh, celebrate the good programs that we have at this college. I would be remiss also if I did not, on behalf of the entire Blinn family, give a special shout out to District thirteen Representative Lady Schubert, who has been a longtime and sincere and hardworking supporter of Blinn College. So Representative Schubert, thank you so much for your leadership within this community, within this district, and in Austin, on behalf of our college and our community. Thank you so very much. Um, I hope you had a good time this morning during Blinn College and I hope you had a particularly nice time visiting Blue Bell Creameries. I was at, uh, two pints in county when I left and I think somebody joined me and eating just about as much as I did. Thank you so very much. You know, I thought in my opening remarks, I would share something with you that you might not be aware of. Blinn College serves a thirteen county service area, so some of the students within your areas come to Blinn College and then Blinn is unique in that about eighty percent of our students do not reside within our thirteen county service area. They come across the state of Texas. So I thought you might be interested in knowing how many came from your district and so I'm gonna call them out for you. We have a hundred and sixty-two students from Representative Coleman's District one hundred and forty-seven, thirty-three students from Representative Burrows District eighty-three, seventy-six students from Representative Luhan's District one eighteen, seventy-four students from Representative Romero's District ninety, two thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven from Representative Schubert's District thirteen, one hundred and seven from Representative Spitzer's District four, seventy-four from Representative Striplin's District ninety-two, seventy-four from Representative Tenderholt's District ninety-four, and one hundred and sixty-two students from Representative Booth's District one hundred and thirty-seven. So you can see that Blinn encompasses many students and welcomes from more than fifteen hundred and fifty zip codes across the state. Thank you so very much for giving your question time with us today, and if you allow me a moment, I'd like to introduce Board Chair from Blinn College, Board of Trustees David Sarm.
Thank you, Dr. Hensley, and good afternoon. On behalf of our entire Board of Trustees who filled the dials just a couple nights before, I want to also welcome you, uh, to Blinn College. It is certainly an honor and a pleasure to host this committee meeting and it was also a pleasure, at least for some of you, I know not everyone could maybe, but those of you who could, we appreciate, uh, taking time to have a little tour of Blinn College and, and learn a little bit more about what we have, uh, to offer to our students here at the run of campus. Uh, I will just say as Board Chair, uh, certainly all of us at Blinn College are very, very proud of our accomplishments, both our faculty accomplishments, student accomplishments. And I just also want to say that me personally, uh, Blinn College helped me in my achievements. Forty-three years ago, about the same time I was, uh, either buying books or, or working to get my schedule in order and, uh, you know, now forty-three years later, I am here chairing the board and I like to take every opportunity I can to tell anyone who will listen about what we have to offer as a college and again, all the accomplishments of the college in recent years. If you would like to know any more information about Blinn, particularly those of you who took the tour this morning, please don't hesitate to ask. Again, as I said, we're very, very proud of our institution and we share that information and help in any way. Uh, once again, thank you for visiting Blinn College, both committee members, you guests in the audience, committee members, again, we thank you for being here, but more importantly, we thank you for the support that you give to our students through what you do as representatives in Austin. Have a very successful.
Thank you, uh, and, and again, thank you. I've, I've, we learned a lot about, there's always more to learn, but about, uh, this at Blinn College. It's a very, uh, longstanding institution in comparison to some in Houston, if it goes back a hundred something years. Uh, we go back to the nineteen fifties of some of them and, uh, and so in my district, we have the University of Houston, Texas Southern University, Houston Community College, University of St. Thomas, uh, U of H Downtown, it's a lot of institutions. But our community colleges are set up very differently. Uh, this is a real campus, uh, for people to come and have a, can have a residential experience, uh, and, uh, clearly, uh, and all, a different experience than, than what students get. I would be the type of person who will recommend, uh, that students come to a place like this, there's, there's a place for them to live. Uh, and they're not, don't have to go, uh, just commute to whatever old big box store that we've renovated in the city of Houston to house classes in. So that's, that's one thing that's extremely important. Uh, also that, you know, you're community oriented and the community supports, uh, its institutions. And this is what Texas needs more of and to get back to that kind of, uh, mindset where we, we're as good as the product that we put out, as good as the product that we have. Uh, so I'm very impressed. I've never been here. So, I'm very impressed. I've never been here before. So, it's very different than any community college anywhere that I've been in Texas. So, thank you very much for allowing us, Mr. Chairman. And the, what does that mean? Campus, say your title again, ma'am, Dr. Henson.
Hi, I'm Mary Hensley, District President of Blynn College.
So, that means you're president of this particular?
The entire college district throughout the 13 counties.
The whole thing. Okay. You know, we've gotten so highfalutin that the person in charge of all of that is now called a chancellor.
I'm the district president.
Okay, so I get confused sometimes and what, you know.
If we called her chancellor, we'd have to pay her back.
Yes, you would.
Call her chancellor.
I'm gonna tell you, you know, you can ask, if anybody's been reading, you can ask President Chancellor Renukatur with that extra chance gives her. She's doing a good job. But again, and I can tell you that Representative Schubert did an excellent job for you last session. An excellent job. And you should give him a round of applause. You know, he hit the ground running. Now, I used to sit next to Lois in public health for probably three sessions, might have been four. I don't even know how many it was. So, I'm familiar with the stories about convenience store gas stations and golf and some of those other things. But you've had good representation, you have good representation now and anything that we can do to make things work for you, Representative Schubert, certainly would be happy to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And he did. He did. He asked me to help and I did. There you go. So, okay. Any other opening remarks? And he brings a wealth of experience in the law to the committee. I'm not an attorney, but he understands how those things work, particularly when we get into real estate and other things. So, with that, we are going to go to charge number one, which is evaluate the Texas Commission on Jail Standards to determine if the commission has the resources and structure to provide sufficient oversight, regulation, and enforcement over Texas county jails. And the chair first calls Don Sal, Sheriff of Grimes County. This is an ongoing issue with thrust into the forefront based on jail suicides and a number of them all around the state. And so, and we're unique. We're the only state, only two states have commissions on jail standards, the county jails in the country, and we're one of them. So, with that, Sheriff Sal, thank you very much for being here and proceed with your testimony.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for having me in this district. I'm trying to talk to Sheriff Kerry Rova about the first lady. I'll have one up there. Really blow our state. I compliment you for that. I've been here many times in my colleagues' house. We represent all our sheriffs and some of them are here today. The jail issues are very close to us. I've heard what some people think. We take a lot of pride in jails. I know, Chairman, you've had a lot of people in your committees that ask a lot of tough questions. I presume you see a lot of passion in the sheriffs that are testing. We take a lot of pride in jails. So, representatives, I've had you all in your districts, all your sheriffs, Representative Lady Schubert, I've come with colleagues. I even had a chief of staff over Tuesday to tour our jail and I hadn't mocked up for it. I tried to give him a souvenir mugshot and he turned it down and...
He's already got a couple of those, Sheriff.
The point I make is, Chairman, I think Cody is one that's like another person. Every time he takes so much of a tour of the jail, they've gone a lot. And that's his first time. I hope he came away. I did announce to staff, it's a small jail, 111 capacity, Grimes County, which is next to Washington County. We've been blessed with good representatives over the years since I was sheriff of Co-Force, you know, Representative Schubert, and they've always come over and kept the test of us. That's also a hard one.
And we were fortunate to have now Senator Co-Force on the County Affairs Committee before she went to the Senate.
I love...
And she asked for it.
I love, she's a great lady and I'm sure she's a good senator and I think we just all flash a lot of good representatives. You know, we have a lot of passion in our jails and I know that I've heard, I've come to all these meetings, I've heard, felt the same. Also, I think sheriffs are passionate about making all the progress that we make, all the progress, I think. As you've heard, I've probably heard the testimonies about the dumping ground of mental equal, sometimes in the county jail. That is, you've heard Sheriff Dennis Wilson talk about it, Sheriff Visser, they're all real passionate about that. And we try, I can only speak to Grimes County. We're a small county, 27,000 population, 111 capacity jail, we have 16 employees, 20 some odd killers, and 12, 24/7. We have this about, I think Cody came by the other day, we have 57 inmates, 610. And I can keep an eye on them. I can, my staff can keep an eye on them. We try to get them in and out of jail quickly. And again, not a lot of large and a lot of big counties do that. It's just the system's got to be tuned up, each county, every county jail, but they're good. I try to get them out quickly. We try to exceed the minimum standards of jurisdiction on jail standards. I'm proud of my staff. I've shown them, I've shown them to try to go to the next level all the time. We have a church in our jail. First room I opened up, I opened a jail on December 11th, 1998. Shannon Herthos was my jail inspector. I said, what in the world is this around? It's a mortal purse. What are you doing? What are you wanting to do? We made a chapel out of it. It's got bureaus in it, it's a working chapel, it's a functional chapel. They have to walk up to church every day. Things like that makes a difference in the atmosphere of a jail. And I think, I think every sheriff in the jail industry has tried to do that. You're going to have trouble. It's one of the smart things to discuss these and try to come up with solutions. So, to reference this topic here, I think the Texas Commission on Jail Standards, I've had a personal good relationship with it, nearly 18 years. I can pass them, as big a file as I can fail them, knock on wood, I have them on inspection. I have mine looking clean every day. It's as clean as a hospital. If you're in a clean car, you feel better. If you're in a clean house, you feel better. If you're in clean jail, you feel better. I tell them, I didn't put you in here, kid. I can only accept you legally. I can only release you legally and not escape. In the meantime, I try to make you stay comfortable as possible and feed them well. My style may not work in a longer jail, but every jail except that has a heart in it, a jail, a jail manager. I do think the Texas Commission on Jail Standards needs more manpower. I feel like they need more funding to accomplish what we're asking them to do, is to have a good oversight of our jails. Not, I'm not asking oversight, if you will, I don't mean that it's perfect, but a good oversight that comes up with training, continuous suggestions we have approved. When they work in my jail, they end up working in another jail, be open to what makes the punishment work. Some counties have cities that have jails. I know that's a tough topic, but maybe what do you bring it up? But the oversight of city jails is not the same as what's over the county jails. Be consistently consistent is something I think that somebody in the future needs to look at, to have standards across the board.
Chairman Whitmire said that he's already going to do that. Chairman Whitmire has indicated that we ought to look at city jails.
I have the opinion, not to be names of the city governments, but I think if you don't have prisoners in jail, they're not consistent and consistent. Because eventually it's impossible to come to a county.
I understand, but I'm not responsible for city jails. And matter of fact, wouldn't even want to be because they have worse problems than you do. And particularly in a big city. But I do believe that we, there are things that we can do that help mitigate problems that exist. And, you know, just because it can't work for everybody doesn't mean you don't try.
You don't try and make everything, you know, succeed in minimum standards.
And as you said, you do, and I bet most other people do. I don't, I don't think there's any thought that they don't. It makes everybody not just feel better, but know that we've reviewed and have done things that don't impede your ability, but help you be better jailers, because it's about jail. So, that's the commitment of this committee is to make sure that we're not putting undue burdens on you, but we, and taking consideration the size of the jail and taking into consideration what would be a financial and a burden on smaller jails. I think that's extremely important. Go ahead.
Well, I encourage comments and appreciation for what they do and I hope that most of them that I've dealt with have our appreciation, comments on what our jail accomplishes to meet those standards. And again, I repeat myself, I press on my people all the time. I'm the keeper of the jail. Sheriff says three punches. Ever since they came, respond from me, always colleagues here, taking the courthouse, serving the peace and the keeper of the jail. Not much has changed. We still do that. And jails are very important to operate humanely. And I do compliment our commission, they've done a good job tonight. I'm sure that, I know there's hard stories out there, opinions, but colleagues I've worked with and any other have had comments for them. If you can approve them, help them out, I think we'd very much appreciate it. Is there any other questions I may ask from this topic?
Members, any questions? Well, thank you very much, Sheriff Sal. We, the committee is listening to you and your fellow sheriffs.
And we appreciate your cooperation and kindness on previous hearings. It's a good idea. I think you're doing that.
Thank you. The chair calls Otto Hannig. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, Sheriff.
Okay. Sheriff of Washington County. Please state your name and who you represent for the record and go ahead and, got any comments? Go ahead and begin your testimony.
My name's Sheriff Otto Hannig, Sheriff of Washington County, here where we are, home of Blue Bell Ice Cream, home of Blynn College. Thank you for hosting this meeting. Really appreciate that. Thank God for being here. This means a lot to us, to our small community, to have this influence that you've all brought here and this positive effect that you'll eventually have with our jail, you know. Representative Schubert, we've been friends for a good while. Thank you for your support of the things that we're all active as good professional service provided to the citizens of our state and our families. Thank you so much. I won't repeat the things that Sheriff Sal said. You've been in this business a long time. This is the end of my fourth year, so basically I'm still brand new to this operation. However, in 1978, I went to work with the state of Texas as a prison guard so that I could work my way through college. '81, I went to the Department of Public Safety, Highway Patrol for a number of years, Texas Rangers for a number of years, investigated with the VA's office here for a number of years, and now the sheriff here for almost four years. And hopefully no one added those years up. Thank you, Phil. Our jail here in Washington County, the capacity is about 150 people, right down to it. County's about 35,000, 15,000 live within the city. And the thing that I learned about jails a long time ago was that they don't contain the hardest, roughest, toughest, meanest people on earth. They sometimes contain our neighbors, our friends, our relatives, and on and on. And when I went to the Washington County Jail with the help of our county judge and our county commissioners, who have been able to help me fund renovation of that jail, the quote of mine, baby, is, "How dare you say that our jail is dirty or filthy or unsanitary?" That is something that myself took pride in. Our jail captain, Jerry Green, seated right back here, also took pride in. And we took ownership in that facility so that when those people are placed in that jail that we see at HEB, that we see at Walmart, they are living in a decent environment. If you call a jail decent, they're living in the cleanest possible place that they can be in. And when the jail commission comes knocking, randomly comes knocking, that fear is not there, not necessarily there. Although, their 10 or 11 hours in our small jail is stressful to all of us. They do their job and they do it well. And I've watched the system since 1978, from the LLS unit, which contained death row, all the way through the counties that I've worked in and Ranger all these years, the county jails, the jail investigations, the custodial deaths that we were all involved in, to where I am now, operating the jail, which is a scary thing, by the way. And these sheriffs can work with me on that. When they go to bed at night, one of their concerns is that that jail is safe and secure for our employees and our inmates. We take pride in that. We really do. Jail commission, thank God we have them because some of the hiccups that we might have aren't necessarily there. Each year we learn, more and more. I, as a rookie sheriff, learns more and more about these jails and how they're supposed to be operated. I can focus these sheriffs here on how their jails are operated. I learn from them. At our conferences, we talk about our jails. It's a main thing, I know. But the problem that we have in all of our county jails, in my opinion, or a lot of them, we've got some of the most underpaying chambers overseeing the largest liability that we, as citizens of this state, have. Training is very important, but so is keeping those employees that you have trained.
Sheriff, we're talking about the exact same issue in CPS, that if you don't pay people what they deserve for the job that they do, they're going to leave. And it's just as simple as that. And then you won't be able to track, so you keep having turnover so you don't, they don't build the necessary experience based on doing the job. You know, I never said this earlier, and I'm not going to say who said it, but they said privately to me that very same thing you just said. And we have expectations for people who, you know, who have to have longevity in order to get good if they do. So, I appreciate, I just want to thank you for bringing that issue to the table.
And so, we also need to have that same type of training and retention of employees in our jail commission. Those guys need to stay up on these rules and regulations and policy changes that we make each, every, maybe each session of legislation. Those guys need to be someone we can look at and rely on their expertise and judgment. You know, a young deputy may tell you something that may be wrong because of lack of experience, lack of education, but once they run across these same issues over and over, like our jail commission does, they'll tell you right away what the answer is to your problem that you have. So, retention of those people are as equally as important as it is to our own jail. But without repeating everything Sheriff Sal said, I'll ask if you have any questions?
I'm probably going to have some questions for the entire panel at the end, so I'll just hold it, hold to the end, maybe, great.
Rep. Stacey. How many, how many times does the commission come by your facility in a year normally?
The annual, the yearly inspection takes place on a random basis, one time a year. However, the executive director will stop by, check on us, take a random walk through our jail, like he did a few months back. So, and the assistant director the same way. They come by quite often. And when I see them walking around the building, you know, I guess it's just, it's just a nervous thing. We've missed something here or not sure why they're here. But they do, they show up on a regular basis and they do a wonderful job. The county judge and I sat with them a couple months ago after their, after his 11-hour inspection. And we had a few little hiccups, but not in six years.
And what is the average salary of a jailer at your facility?
Right now, we're about $12.66 an hour level.
Starting.
Starting.
And are we, are you having a problem bringing them in? Are they coming in at that level and then they're just not staying when they understand the workload? Or are you having trouble? Or are you having trouble even getting the applications in to fill?
All of the other, we're, we're, our salary is, is, is always, always an issue. Retention is always an issue. I don't know that anyone in this room, other than Captain Jerry Green, that raised her hand and said that I want to be, I want to retire as a jailer. That, that's the problem. The incentive to, to be part of that twelve hour lock, locked in the four walls is tough. And what you're getting is, you're getting the young crowd, especially in our jail, where they believe that if they stay there long enough, we're gonna send them to the police academy. And the county commissioners' court has agreed to fund that, partially fund that, to where we can actually do that. So, that incentive is there. So is, so are the other sheriffs trying, you know, to, to do the same thing we're doing. So, our jail is just constantly moving around, or they're going off to better jobs.
Representative Hubert.
Just follow up on the retention question that Representative Stickler was asking. And to dial it even further into our area, a lot of people don't realize, I have seven counties. Four of my seven counties are in the Eagle Ford Shale, okay? So there's a lot of oil and gas activity. So let's even bring it closer to that. I know Sheriff Harmon, you're gonna wanna comment on this as well. Outside industries like that, I mean, there are times when oil and gas is booming, and, and lots of sheriff's deputies will leave for those higher paying jobs. Let's talk about those sort of issues that we face here in, in this area of the world as well.
We faced it, and we were almost one shift down on jailers. We only have sixteen total covering four shifts. So when you start figuring in time off in that place, and you're, you're getting real close to the, to, to the rule. But we watched that happen. We watched quite a few of our jailers leave, and, and take up the, the oilfield type of work. And we've also seen a couple of them come back, and I'm sure the other sheriffs may have, may have witnessed that as well. But there is, there's a lot of variables, sir, when it comes to retention of employees, or them walking in and submitting an application to come work in our jail. Not necessarily going to other, to, to the oilfield where there's a lot more money. It may be just, just moving from another, from one area to the other, or finishing Glenn College and moving on to another. There are a lot of work behind this.
You know, it, it is an issue. I imagine that some places are, your company is a little bit better, and you get paid more, and maybe Wendy's. You know, so there, there's, there's an issue of pay to qualifications, and I think most folks, I wouldn't have never known the per hour pay of a jailer, because we, most of us don't view it the way it actually is. So it's, it's really an important issue for the, the ability for you all to do your jobs.
Very important issue to us, salaries, and, and we just have budget here this year, this week, on that. County commissioners, county judges, and the sheriff and the captain, so we're looking at all that. We're trying to find that, that, that county money. County money just doesn't, doesn't come in at the, at the rate that we wish it did, we're all learning. But at the same time, we're, we're hoping to find a way to get our jailers better salaries so that we can keep them, at least for a couple of years. Because as you all know, we have to immediately send them to some type of training. We have to get them qualified and certified. And they're not just sheriff's office rules, or jail rules that we have, but it's state law in question. And I'm a believer in that, by the way. I've, I've said I worked for the state of Texas for over thirty years, and I know the way this system kinda works. County side of this is a little different for me, but I'm slowly learning that. But at the same time, we've got to address those salaries of our jail staff statewide.
Additional questions, members? We are gonna have a discussion about being released on PR bonds, or diverting completely from someone being booked into the county jail. We don't have to discuss it now, because I know that, but that's something I, I hope can help with the census, where people who probably don't even belong there at all, can be taken somewhere else, or something else can be done, to keep, keep people out of your jail before they even get there for you, for all of you all, to get them out fast. Without suffering, you know, obviously, I say it's not obvious, but, you know, clearly keeping the public safety in mind.
And Sheriff, I'm all for what Sheriff Sal said. As a, as a manager of jail, me myself and Captain, we're all for getting these people in and out of there. And we, we know the limits of, of how far these things need to go, for our security and risk of our public by releasing them. But at the same time, we are, we, we, sometime, we've, we've got people in our jail that need to be released immediately, with our mental health issues. We're overwhelming every sheriff in this state, and probably every jail manager in the nation, mental health is, is, is a high priority, and to get those people in and out of there, that is our number one goal between these two sheriffs and myself, is to get those people out of our confined facility that have mental health issues.
And, and, and we hope to make progress, more progress on that next session with the House Select Committee on, on mental health. Any other questions, members? Thank you for taking your time to be here. Really do appreciate it. The chair calls Micah Harmon, the sheriff of La Vaca County. When you come up, please state your name and who you represent for the record.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members. My name is Micah Harmon, I'm the sheriff of La Vaca County, Texas. Representative Hubert is my representative. You know, I have to say, repeat what you said, he did an excellent job his last session. As y'all know, the sheriffs tell a lot of time at the Capitol last session, and I kept a pretty close eye on, on my rep there, and he, he did a real good job.
Yeah, yeah, there were a few little bills that, that, um, yeah. You know, it's hard to be the chair and have to mediate costs. So anyway, but we, we split a baby, we might have to do something with it, in terms of visitation next session, we will see.
Sure. Well, we're, we're proud of it. He just came down last week and visited with us, came to Shiner, and visited a depository over there, and as all may not know, Shiner, Texas is in La Vaca County, so good old Shiner beer.
Sheriff, we happened to stop by the brewery while we were there. Official business only, of course, at the brewery.
I was just thinking, Chairman, that since y'all had the Blue Bell, maybe it's time for y'all to convene in La Vaca County.
Seconded.
Uh, Shiner Bach.
Sometimes we call that a float.
There you go. La Vaca County is, is a small rural county. I, I don't have near the capacity as we still have the guys. My, my jail is only forty-eight minutes, and we probably average around thirty-five a daily population. So, it's very vast difference from, from these larger urban jails. I will say that, in, in reference to, to the jail commission, it is my opinion that one inspection a year is sufficient. And the reason I say that mainly, it, it is because jails that are not in compliance, they, they are going to be re-inspected anyway. So, as these, as the inspectors go around the state and inspect the jails, if they're in good order and have no deficiencies, there's really no, no reason for the inspectors to come back. If they, if they have deficiencies, if, if they need to be, if they fail their jail inspection, then they're gonna be seeing a jail inspector quite a bit. So, I, I really don't feel like there's a need for more than one jail inspection per And if you were to mandate or require the inspectors to do more than one inspection per year, you're clearly gonna have to probably double the staff of the jail commission. And with the, that's gonna require a very large amount of budget, more budget for the jail commission. One of the things that I know the jail commission struggles with is the salaries of their staff. I feel like they need to be more competitive. There's, there's larger jails around the state, they're trying to recruit these guys away from Mr. Wood there at the commission, and so it's, it's, you know, it can be difficult for him to retain good inspectors with the current salary that they have. Also, budgetary wise, the, the jail commission, when they have sufficient budget funds, do a lot of training for the jail and the sheriffs around the state. And when their budget gets cut, which it has been, they, they then have to alleviate some of their...
And if I'm, if I may, Sheriff, you know, these types of agencies in the state can either be police officers, or, you know, daddy saying, you know, you don't know, I'm gonna beat you upside your head, or whatever, they beat you upside. But it's important to have people who can help create a, a better atmosphere, and have more people to assist in changes that need to be made, or recommend changes, or to support that sheriff and, and their needs. So I think that that's more the thought here, I just want, and I think it's important that you said that. It's not necessarily to create inspections as it is, to, to make sure that we're improving upon what we're doing and guiding, and assisting those jailers, rather than coming in as a, a person who's looking to gotcha.
Yes. And, and that's true. I know that before I became sheriff, every year, they used to have scheduled inspections. It wasn't random, you knew when they were coming. They were calling you, letting you know. But, but back then, the sheriff would get nervous, oh, the jail commission's coming, well, we're gonna get in trouble, and blah, and blah. And so, when I took office twelve years ago, we had just opened a new jail, and first time that I heard the jail commission was coming, well, I was scared to death. I, you know, I was scared, they're gonna come down there, and they're gonna jump all over me, and, you know, it, it was very, it was very scary to me. But what I found out was, they're here to help us. They give us technical assistance, they advise us, and so it, it's not, we're coming to get you, it's, we're coming down there to, to make sure everything's all right, and see what we can help you. So, you know, I, I, I think, as I say, their, their resources right now, I'm kinda, I would like to see some salary increases for, for them, and some more budget, uh, training budget money, so they can continue traveling around the state and, and, and training our jailers. And that's always, that, that takes a liability off of, off of the counties when, when we can get that training. It benefits the jailers, and it also benefits the inmates. So, that's, that's kinda my opinion, and I appreciate the opportunity to come up here and talk to you on La Vaca Jail Commission.
That's true. Yes, Representative Stickler.
Um, so you are proposing that, who does the training? Where do you think that would be best done?
The, the jail, the jail commission has, in the past, they've traveled around the state and, and held training classes for our jail on, on different, different things.
And you think that's the best way to continue? If you had it your way? Is just have them ramp that up again?
I think if they can, if they can get the budget money to do it again. I know my jailers, the ones that I have sent to those classes, they, they came back with a lot of knowledge in them, and they said that they got a lot out of the class, and they enjoyed going through them.
Sheriff, if I can follow up, just, and this might be a question for the whole panel. How much, with the smaller departments, how many man-hours, what kind of manpower are you using to plan and coordinate for the regulations and the inspections? Obviously, you don't know when it's going to happen, so do you have a certain person that's in charge of that, that area, or how do you spread that around your department?
Well, of course, we all have a jail administrator, you know, that they may have different ranks, captain, sergeant, lieutenant, whatever, but, but they're jail administrators, and they, they are in charge of, of, in the jail, and the administrative jail. I tell my people, my jail administrator, and my jailers, that every day is jail inspection day. Any particular day, those guys can walk through that door, and you better be able to pass that inspection. And that's how we run it over there. And it, and, and so, we don't, we don't figure, okay, well, I'm thinking maybe they're gonna be coming pretty soon, and then all of a sudden start ramping up and get your head in. We're, we're constantly in compliance, and so every day is jail inspection day in La Vaca County.
Members, you have any additional questions? I really appreciate you being here today and sharing your wisdom with us. You know, I, I think it's important that, to note that the speaker gave us this charge. This isn't one that, no, he, they gave it to us. So they're clearly interested in, in whether or not you have enough resources, as it says here. Has the resources and structure, this is the commission, to provide sufficient oversight, regulation, and enforcement over Texas County jails? So, the sufficient oversight goes into training and, and making sure that people can do their job. And I just want you to know that, even though I, I have an appreciation for what you all do, so does the speaker's office.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I thank, I thank y'all for inviting me, and I look forward to working with y'all throughout the interim and also the session.
Yes, same here. Any, any, any questions, members?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. We have pub, public testimony, we have a witness, and, and, let me make sure I do this. Mr. Wood, is there anything that you would like to offer to any of the testimony that was made today, Brandon? And if so, I'm, I'm asking you because, you know, it's, it's always nice to hear from you and see you, before we go to public testimony.
Brandon Wood, Detective Director, Texas Commission on Jail Standards. I was not intending to provide the testimony today, but I would like to thank the sheriffs for their support. We have attempted to ensure that it is not seen as an adversarial relationship as it has in years past. We understand our role, we understand the need for efficiency, to ensure that tax paid dollars are expended wisely, but we also take our job very seriously, and if it wasn't for a dedicated staff that I have, we would be unable to accomplish what we are charged with, and I appreciate the opportunity to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, members? With, well, thank you, thank you for what you do, and, and as we move through this to make the recommendations, we might be asking you a little bit about details.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes. Well, members, any additional, any questions of, of Mr. Wood? Thank, thank you very much. The chair calls Jerry Green. Jerry Green is captain of jail administration in Brenham, and if you, with Washington County, would you please state your name and who you represent for the record?
Jerry Green, Michigan County Sheriff. Appreciate the opportunity. How can you mention more of your... Well, in two states, the state of Texas and the United States have jail commissions. I've had the opportunity to go to the National Institute of Corrections and visit with some of my peers throughout the United States. And those without jail commissions, and without that tool, without that asset, have to depend on private enterprise, credit association, things like that, which cost them money. The jail commission is an important tool. I, Red Sam Watt sitting back there, he's our inspector, I depend on him. I depend on him to answer questions, to give me ideas. So, it's a tool we don't use just once a year. We use that tool several times a year throughout the year. I do visit, but they can email, phone call, and that works. So the interaction doesn't occur just that one time. Over lunch, Mr. Sam Watt has fifty-eight jails that he inspects. How many weeks in a year? Fifty-two. Where does Mr. Sam Watt get some vacations? Where Mr. Sam Watt gets his vacation, holiday? So you can see, they stay pretty busy already, and then with the schedule they have. I don't know, but I'm old, I probably could do that, but if you're young, it's a young person, you can't.
I couldn't do it either, so, don't worry. And I'm sort of old.
But without them, as a jail administrator, our job would be even harder. And anything, and to pick what the sheriff said, I wouldn't, to do that for what their salary gains is, it's pretty tough. I would hate to know that we moved that man right there to jail, because he hasn't been around enough to know this is, they're our best help if we, if we have some issues. And so, we've come a long way. Without, without going through a lot of other, I might go through the mental thing, but that's a whole issue, but the jail commission, they deserve everything that they do.
And we will be talking about some of the mental health issues during the eleven fifteen waiver transformation portion of this hearing.
Well, the jail commission has provided us a lot of tools that help us identify those people. So, or redundant, which are good. You have to have some redundancy in this process to make sure you didn't miss it the first time. I kind of equate it to the dog chasing the car. We identify them, we realize there's an issue, we follow the statute, we notify the magistrate, we notify the mental health authority, they give a value, and we guess they have a problem, but that person is in jail on a very serious offense, so there is no PR bond, there isn't bonding that's going to happen. They come, yes, you suicide, yes, that person has issues, no, we don't have any place to put you. You think that? Six, seven years ago, maybe eight years ago, at one time, Ash, if we had someone in jail on charges, they had a secure area. They would take that person, get them back on their biz, get them back to land out, come back to jail in a better mental state. We don't have that avenue anymore. So, what do we do with them?
Well, that's the reason why we're looking at this, and that's the reason why it's part of the jurisdiction of the Select Committee on Mental Health, and why Crem Jure members are a part of that. Because we did do it differently. But the population of Texas has changed so much and grown so much, that we have to be mindful that people who don't belong there should never be booked in the first place. The people who do belong there, you know, we settled this a long time ago when Hinckley shot Reagan. You can be mentally ill, and you're going to jail forever. So, you know, we don't have a real defense that's called insanity. So when you start talking about someone who's mentally ill, yeah, they committed a crime, they committed a crime and they're mentally ill, that, that, that's what it's called. And then they go to jail for the same amount of time that anybody else does. But for people, it's better for people not to even go in if, if, but if the reason for their crime is because they're off their medication, and that's where we need to move it to. And we can get there, but we're not quite there yet. So it's even prior to PR bond.
Well, I use the example, the deputy gets a call. I've been on the street, and I've been working in jail, and I tell you, working in jail is a heck of a lot harder than anything other than, but they make a call, and this person obviously has mental issues, but he's assaulted grandpa, whatever, he is a physical threat.
That's why it's called danger to yourself and others. Grandpa was another.
So, he cut, they bring him to jail, assault elderly, they charge him a lot. They bring him to jail, well, you can't really let him go back out of jail, because you don't know what he's going to do. But jail is not the true option either, because he has a mental issue.
Yeah, that's not what it's designed for.
So, we don't have an avenue between, you can't really let him go, and you keep him in jail. There is no other avenue.
There can be.
Yes. But what I'm saying is, there used to be.
Yeah, you know, that's what money pays for. In two thousand and three, we had the most drastic cuts in mental health funding that ever occurred, and we're still working our way back. But that's the money that paid for treatment and the ability to provide places for people to go when the daytime isn't available. So, so that, that we have to rebuild. And through the eleven transfer, fifteen transformation waiver, we have additional funds, and through the increases in funds to the, I don't know, we keep changing the names of things, but State Health Services, then we'll be able to do that. And I think that it's really important, because I know most people, you know, I have bipolar disorder, so I'm not always sane every day. I'm not sane today, by the way. No, just joking. But I think that the sheriff's comment was really important. You know, those are your cousins, uncles, grandparents, parents, your nieces, nephews, daughters, those are the people that are in our mental health system. And so, if, you know, the idea that just because they have a mental illness, we're not gonna treat them like our neighbors, and they didn't want to be there, believe me, nobody wants mental illness. And if it was communicable, people would be in, we wouldn't, shoot, talk about Zilka, Zika, whatever it's called, we'd be like, Don, don't want to catch that, because you don't.
One more little thing, and I'll be, you take a jail, especially a jail like ours, a small jail, ninety-nine percent of people in that jail have not been convicted of a warrant of criminal.
That's right. Because that's not what jails do. Jails don't house people who have been adjudicated.
So, therefore, their civil rights, their constitutional rights are one thing, they are all stone-tacked, they haven't lost anything. As someone who's been convicted of a felony in those two, two TDC, that's why we have a standard, we have in jail versus what they have in TDC, so, and it is, your brother, your brother, your sister, your cousin, your brother.
Well, you know, we learn about each new drug that people take, and most of them now are manufactured instead of grown. So, demand reduction is extremely important in that regard, and we don't know what those synthetic drugs do to people's brains. We really don't know. And so I think that's why people are very concerned, that, that, you know, this is, this is the tip of the iceberg of behavioral health issues. And it, the rural areas are the growth of real challenges for substance abuse and mental health because of meth, and because of, you know, heroin, and these other issues, and, you know, we have to, these things go together, as you already know. And again, you know, Bob Bullock, who's standing as a building, we passed by, that was named for something, either his son or him, but he told me something about public education. He said, you never solve it, you only manage it. And so we have to get to the point in these issues where we manage them the best that we can, to make sure the least amount of harm is done. And it really tells people who we are, as, how we treat people who of no fault of their own are in a situation where they could do better, but the system has been set up not to provide that. I appreciate you testifying, because I think it's very important for all of us to understand, you know, what the challenges are, and we're working on some ways that would reduce the need, have no additional man staffing, but ways that people can get, get help. And I think that's something this committee is doing. We want to solve problems, we're not here to just talk about.
And I think that's what the jail commission does, I think they're in the business of solving problems. They're in the business of trying to keep us, avert the problem before it becomes a problem. I appreciate your help, and I appreciate your opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, if we can.
Yes, Representative Stig.
Just a quick question. An issue I worked on last session was in-person visitation rights, and I was just curious if your facility offers in-person visitation, or if y'all have transitioned?
County registration?
Yes.
Are you talking about video versus face-to-face?
Yeah, there's, there's some county jails that have moved to a-
Total video.
A video.
We do face-to-face.
Okay.
But we're not live contact.
Gotcha.
And, and that was a, you know, we split the baby on that bill, but, so if someone had already built a new jail, they didn't have to modify the jail. But if you go to build a new jail, you have to modify it for in-person visitation.
Go to Fort Bend County, they're all, at one time, we're all video visiting. Each cell had video, and then they got a video station outside, or what they look to. But we never had video, we are all, our, face-to-face.
What's really interesting is, Harris County Jail uses in-person visitation, which is the largest jail. So, that, that's an issue that we're gonna have to stay on top of.
Yep.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to provide public testimony on this part of our agenda? And again, this is a work in progress, we'll write our report to have it submitted prior to the next session of the legislature, which will include recommendations. And again, don't hesitate to bring your written recommendations by to Katie, so it doesn't all have to be in, on the record in these hearings, and we want to work with you, so we don't do something to you. Great, thanks. I'm gonna turn over the chair to Representative Schubert, to go to the next charge on law enforcement agencies, and if you don't mind, y'all don't mind, I'll make a call right quick. But he's better than me, anyway.
I want to forewarn you, I'm not as talented as the chairman, so the quality of this hearing is about to be regressed a lot here, but we're gonna, we're gonna do it together. So the second one, study the implications and effects on law enforcement agencies and individuals that stem from the publication, republication, or other dissemination for public internet access of mugshots and other criminal history information regarding involvement of an individual in the criminal justice system. Katie, looks like we have the same panel, so I'm gonna recall Sheriff Don Sal from Grimes As always, please state your name and who you represent for the record.
Don Sal, Sheriff of Grimes County, Texas. I'm just talking here, I don't quite understand all of it in a way, but I'm not really pleased with having mugshots in the paper. Sometimes there's a story, I've got one of those, will be printed today in our area, a murder case, and that goes with the story, putting blank in mugshots, I'm not sure I care for that. I, in our weekly paper in Alamo, Texas, coverage of counties, they have a police blotter, sheriff blotter, and some jail rosters, source of gossip, very popular. They just pop in here, like, oh, somebody did, who got in jail, and sometimes, sometimes it's painful. Having mugshots in a paper, if they're just arrested, mass, maybe sometimes painful. And you go to some areas, I don't know, in my area, I don't, I just, lower city, especially there, catching this mess, maybe, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Like Sheriff said, well, go, you get to Walmart, and you see people you have in jail, I have a mail time, sheriff out of the jail, and I was, I see my wife have a sheriff, you're gonna run into people. I've had some family members in my jail, I mean, I save my family unit, so, you're not staying good with it. But, you know, it's not my fault they went to jail, but, you know, you're gonna pay them to get out, nobody's gonna be there. So sometimes, I think it's a money-making issue, possibly. As I said, I do speak for Grimes County, Texas, with sheriffs I've talked to around the state, on this, feedback, and they're not for it, some of them are, I mean, I'm a big problem, really, before, but, you take, this is one paper in our area that just pulled mugshots, front and back, just got tons of jail roster that was going on, and if that made any good, I don't know, honestly. Our weekly paper in Alamo has a jail roster, the pictures of this particular case, the mugshot was sent by the jails immediately. I don't have that many privileges, I guess if they wanted to, they could, a lot of people would question mugshots, I guess, but I'm just in purpose. I thought about this question when Kate was out here today, and she talked about this, I don't really know how else to answer it, but I just don't think, I'm not for it. And, what Sheriff Honoch said, there's so many things about a jail that's, you take Big Five, Harris, Galveston, Passover, Travis, is a one level. Take another level like Brazos, McLemone, Galveston, but those are another level. The vast majority, I can, I can only consider the largest populated jail, one hundred eleven, a lot, so many of them, I don't know the stats, I read it for on that one hand, but most jails are twenty, forty, fifty-six, from that level. You have, you have to look at so many factors. This, this little thing here, I just can't, can't see it. You have to treat people fair in a jail, like we discussed in early testimony, the jail we talked a while ago, you have to train, prepare, react. You have to train people, if you don't have always a pool, people, you gotta make, you know, people want, I hope she says a career, can't make them jail, if you start to go to the police academy, you want to be having some kind of life in the tunnel. That's the way I view our, we have a lot of our jailers have gone on to the police academy. Retention rate, I've had about seventy, seventy-five percent of the retention rate of the people who started, just back there, jailer, are now seasoned officers, who stayed around the area, proper, et cetera, so. There's a lot of factors in that, but getting off the top of this mugshot issue, but, I'm certainly would like to question on that, everything.
Members? Just a quick question. Do you know when we started doing that? Is it a newer thing?
I'd have to refer that to Mr. Wood on the jail commission, I just don't have a proper answer for that, I know it's the off the guy issue, it's kind of like, it's kind of like video visitation, it wasn't a second, at my level, I don't have video visitation, I have, we have face-to-face, I might, Saturday, Sunday, I go see them, I'm familiar with them, I see them, we allow, but we don't have the video, so it's like another level, but I just don't, don't answer that. It's like, technology sometimes is good, sometimes it's money-making abuse. I just don't, something I just don't feel like to mention, not yet.
Thank you. Other questions?
Sheriff, we appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Sheriff Honoch from Washington County.
Again, I'm Sheriff Honoch, Washington County. I won't repeat everything that Sheriff Sal said, but I have my own views on these things. I came to the sheriff's office, I quickly learned that the jail photos and inmate names were available to anybody that needed them, in fact, you could put them on your website. We've chosen not to do any of that. With the news media calls, according to the rules and regulations, we provide them with the name and a photograph of these individuals that are in our jail. Fortunately, we're in a small town, we have a great relationship with our media outlets here. I don't believe in putting these low-class misdemeanor photographs in a newspaper that just- I don't believe in putting these low-class misdemeanor photographs in the newspaper that's just my personal opinion. And I ask, remind them of my personal opinion. Sometimes they listen to me, sometimes they don't. We commit misdemeanors, simple as that. Not everybody that gets arrested for a misdemeanor needs to have their picture on the front page of the Brenner Banner Press. Again, friends, neighbors, relatives, the people you see in HEB. So we kind of discourage that if we can. Just, just having that conversation with the local news media has, has done a world of good where they don't insist on these photographs because they're low-class misdemeanors. We don't put every, up, every detail of what we do in the newspaper. We make a lot of arrests each month. The significant repeated offenders, let's put them on the front page of Brenner Banner Press. Let's let the public know that these repeated offenders are out there victimizing us while we're away from our homes and in our jobs. We don't have a problem with that. Therefore, we don't discuss through the media every single thing we do. People ask, why don't you do that? It's not proactive in our opinion. We do our jobs behind the scenes sometimes and do them, do them while they give you that. Any questions?
Members? Thank you, Sheriff.
You're welcome.
And Sheriff Harmon from Lava County.
Sheriff Harmon, Lava County Sheriff. In Lava County, our, our photo, uh, jail inmate photographs and booking information goes into a, a record management system that's dumped into our software vendor's server. And then there's a link on our webpage where family and, or public or anybody can go link to our webpage and see who's in our jail at any given time. And there's, there's their name and what they're charged with in the photograph. I've never, I know that, that, I think what y'all are referring to are these websites that obtain these mugshots and put them up on the, and, on their websites. And then if you want to have your mugshot removed from their website, you have to pay them a ransom, so to speak. I think that's, that's the issue here that, that y'all are talking about, I believe. I've never had a inmate or a family member or anyone else contact me and say, hey, I'm having a problem with this website, my picture's on there, and I need to take it down. I've never had a problem with this issue in Lava County, so I'm not very well versed in it at all.
Members? Questions? Thank you, guys, for coming out and testifying. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Public testimony. Any public testimony on this item? All right. Okay, we'll move to the next one. Study statutory mandated services provided by sheriffs and constables and determine whether fee schedules allow cost recovery without placing undue burdens on recipients of those services. We'll call up the entire panel. Constable Dennis Goss, Constable Jeff Reeves, County Judge John Breeden. And we'll kind of come one at a time and, and come on up. And whoever wants to go first, just go to the mic and introduce yourself and, and who you represent. Thought they were going to throw you right in there, Judge.
Hello. My name is Dennis K. Goss, I'm Constable of Borlson County, 362. I am representing the Texas Justice of Peace and Constable Association of Borlson County. Today with me, also have from Travis County, Officer Carlos Lopez, that Constable Lopez. Two of his staff, Chief Deputy Bobby Catters and Ms. Pantel from Brazos County, and three constables. Officers, we have Constable Isaac Butler and his Chief Deputy, Hezekiah Carter. Also have from Brazos County, Jeff Reeves, who will also be testifying. Also from Washington County, have Butch Foskey, Constable's Chief Deputy, William Shepherd, and also Constable Ken Holler. And I do testify or speak on behalf of these organizations. The fee schedule for, from raising from $50 to approximately $75. Also like to say that Lady Schubert, I've known him, since he moved to Snug, he graduated from high school with my son.
Well, I have some questions.
Yeah, I was about to say.
But anyway, they went, after they went to college, they went on with their different careers, and happy to see that Lady's here today.
And I, I'll break in there for a second, Constable. I've known the Constable for a long time, son. Never had the opportunity to ride in his vehicle in an official capacity, only personal capacity, okay? Let's put that there.
I'm here to talk about fee schedule. When I took office in January 1st of 1989, if I recollect correctly, the warrant fee was $35, along with Borlson County's civil process service fee was $35. Through the years, that has increased on the civil process end. Where we are at now is $75 with possible increase coming up here next year. As far as the warrant service fees, it's only increased one time in 1999 to the current $50, which was 17 years ago. In our county, it's a rural agriculture county. Our tax base is basically agriculture. We have hardly any major industry in the county. We do that small wells, but that fluctuates maybe two to three years pretty good, and then you go 10 to 12 years that goes back there. So our tax base is basically on agriculture. Well, we try to go out and serve warrants on people that need to go to jail. The, the fee of $50 doesn't really cover the cost. At $75 for a warrant fee or for a civil process fee, it will cover the cost at this time. Not to say that many people will play it wrong, but just comparing the warrant fee, civil process fees, $75 will be a work, working them. If not, if we don't, none of the agency with four constable offices, two PDs, and one sheriff's office. And as far as I know, none of them really have a warrant service, officers that go out and do warrants because it's just not cost efficient. So the way we really catch people is if I know where they live, just have to go by our certain papers, cards on the tracker. And in Borlson County, there's too many highways. A lot of the warrants that we get are, I'd say 45% are out of county. And it's just not feasible to go to the surrounding counties on warrant service to try to take those. And even if you send up, the other counties are in the same shape we are, they're not really doing their own warrants. They're sure not going to do ours. So with the increase in that warrant fee, it'd be feasible for us to go out and to join the counties to help out. When I get a warrant, for Lava County, asks for assistance to do a warrant service, it would be feasible for me to do that. So I'm in favor, and I hope y'all will be, of increasing that warrant fee from $50 to $75. Any questions?
Members? What would you do with the extra revenue?
The what, yeah?
What would you do with the extra $25?
Well, just to cover the costs. It's not really anything we do. It would just take the burden off the taxpayer. Because we would go out and do a lot of warrant fees for that price. The taxpayers would be actually for our time, our vehicle maintenance, and then our, our fuel costs. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be that we would do anything except cover our expenses where it's not a bigger burden on the taxpayers at this time.
Other questions? Thank you, Constable. Tell everybody I said hello. Call Constable Jeff Reeves. Once again, state your name and who you represent, please.
Yes, sir. Constable Jeff Reeves, Brazos County, 361. And not to leave answer, thank you, Dennis, but strictly answer a very good question. Unfortunately, what will we do with those, with those monies, that extra $25? Well, like I said, it's been 17 years of gases, doubled, vehicle costs, salaries, everything's gone up double probably since. All this, last time it was raised in 1999. So obviously, what we do is kind of cost, and we probably actually afford to make it higher than that. But, you know, the big thing here is we don't think our taxpayers should have to cover, take care of this. It should be the violator, the person that pays the warrant. You've got to remember, a lot of these warrants, a lot of time, when we get out there, as of right now, the judge may grant us a certain service or some, the taxpayers, what was their cost right now? That's not good. But.
Do you think that you'll ask the county for less money?
I think we'll ask the county for.
You're talking about off-centering what the county's giving you right now?
I think we'll make the county more money to cover costs. I don't think we're going to make a whole bunch of money off of it. Just an example.
But I mean, do you think that you'll need to, you talk about changing the burden from the taxpayers to these folks. So will, will the taxpayers be paying less if we give that $75, in your opinion? Or are you eating so much right now of the cost that you'll keep on getting this same source from the taxpayers, you'll just get more of here too? Is it, is it going to come down for the taxpayers, is what I'm asking?
I think it would come down for the taxpayers. You know, the violator going to have to commit the crime, whatever they beg the warrants issued for. You've got to remember that if they, they take care of their, their fine or whatever, there's no warrant involved. Well, once the warrant's involved, that's where it starts costing, it costs the taxpayer right now. We increase that, and let, let that violator pay it, I think it offsets the cost.
I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, will your office receive more funds to perform your job if it's raised to 75? Or are you just trying to change the mechanism in which is funding your office? Are you asking for more dollars to operate your office?
I would love for it to work out that way to a certain degree. I'm not sure if it act, I don't know that part of specifically. I know that it's cost lawfare to taxpayer, which I know is most important for us to get that or to help offset the costs, which would have hurt taxpayers' interests. But I'm hoping yes or no, that, that some funds come in, more funds come into this to help us.
And Representative, I think Judge Breeden next might have an, an answer to that, that point of the question as well.
Yeah, you have to kind of write that up, I believe. But, you know, I guess the simplest way I can kind of put it is, let's say a warrant is executed, and all fees are collected from the defendant. The defendant will pay 50% of the actual cost by, by paying the $50 warrant fee. The actual average is actually around $100. So the remaining cost right now is 50% is absorbed by the local taxpayer. On the one that's executed, the funds are not recovered from the defendant, and such as like the community service is given. 100% of the cost right now is absorbed by the local taxpayers that are defended. We need your assistance, of course, in changing that, the fee, and let the violator be more responsible for the fee.
I have a follow-up question. Just, members, to give a geographical perspective, Brazos County is one of the larger counties in this area. And Constable Goss said earlier that a lot of times, because of the fee structure, you said that there's not a lot of, hey, I've got this guy on the edge of the county, Brazos, can you go help out with that? So my question, Constable, is if the fee was increased, would that free up more resources maybe to, to cooperate more with surrounding counties? Brazos County just has a larger sheriff's department because they're a larger county than a lot of the other counties around. Just wondering if that would lead to greater cooperation amongst the area counties? Would that free up some resources maybe to do that, assist other counties in that?
I, I would think so, would hope so. Like you said, the sheriffs also are having to deal with the same problem. So it's a benefit, it's just not the constable or the sheriffs.
Thank you. Questions? All right. Thanks, sir. We'll call up Judge Breeden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members, John Breeden, Washington County Judge. Obviously, these guys serve warrants, and, and that's not my job. I'm, I'm in the budget end of the things. But let me emphasize one thing first. Warrants are issued because someone either pled or convicted, and here's what the, the sentence is, which includes fines or fees, or community service, and they didn't do what they're supposed to do. We've got someone who has not done what they're supposed to do, and now the warrant's issued to go out and arrest him. And right now, and, and the term I just heard was 50%, based on some things I've seen, it's anywhere from a third to 50% of the cost is covered by that person's paying the warrant. And, and the rest is borne by the county. And, and so the taxpayers are paying that. And like so many things, the county functions doing the job given to us by the state. That's the county function by and large, but a goodly part of those functions that we do for the state, we fund, the state does not fund. And we're saying here, the violator should be funding, not the taxpayers. When I'm looking at, at my county budget, and we're in the midst of that at this moment, we have three major revenue streams. Property tax, which is the major revenue stream. We are a county that collects sales tax, which, as you know, buys down our property tax rate for the effective tax rate, and then fines and fees. And, and so it is part of our revenue stream, but then when we're looking at our overall budget, what we're paying, when we're paying these guys, and, and their whole department, and what we're, we're, what we have to budget for all of them, not only just salary with their vehicles and their office supplies and all of the other things, here's how much it is. We're offsetting that with revenue. And so the question becomes, the revenue that comes in, if we had more revenue, then there's less that we're having to put from taxpayer funds to run that as is. Now, would we expand or not? I don't know. It depends. There's so many things, it depends. There are a lot of other county departments that want that money. And, and that's part of what our budget process is looking at right now. But just from the pure dollar standpoint, I believe that if this is a violator who did not do what they're supposed to do, they should be paying this, not the taxpayer.
How, how often do you think that, does this not get paid, period? Because they don't have the means to do it.
And, and that's, that's there, and, and of course, I go where you're headed because I've heard that, that it's the new debtor's prison situation. And, and, and that exists in, in some cases, but there's a whole lot of cases that, that does not exist. There's a whole lot of cases where the people have the ability to pay, and they just haven't done it.
I'm just wondering if, if, how it will affect collection of the fee at all. I may have $51, and I can give you 50, but if you tell me that you need 75, and I don't have it, then you're not going to get anything.
Most of the time, they got a payment plan. Most of the time, there's a payment plan. And, and hey, here's what I'm making, here's what's going on. Okay, you pay us $10 a week. Or you, you get paid every two weeks, you pay us $25 every two weeks until you have this paid off. The warrant goes out when they don't do that. And so it, it, it's a situation where I think that, that it, it, it wouldn't change that with what you make, you can pay $25 every two weeks when you get paid. That part's not going to change, they're just going to have to do it for longer. But I, I don't, I don't think that it would change things greatly.
I have a question. And, and are these strictly criminal warrants, or this civil and criminal that you're talking about?
What we're looking at in, in the, in the warrants is by and large criminal.
So the motion to appear and all those aren't what you were talking about today, any of those type of things? Any like motion to appear where you have to go out and serve warrants for people to appear in court for civil reasons? Yeah, those aren't, are those talked, because that's what constables do that also, right? Do we serve those? And are those? Okay, that's totally separate, okay.
I'm glad somebody booked it.
No, I find, I find this very interesting. I, just to let everybody know a little background, back in my early days, I was a deputy sheriff. I worked in the jail for about three years, and I was a warrant officer for about three and a half years.
And, you know, it, it's a situation where I hesitate to say, but I'll just put it on the table anyway. One of the things you will hear from counties a great deal is the unfunded mandates that we have. What I find interesting sometimes is the fact that I go to Austin and I listen to you. What I find interesting sometimes is the fact that I go to Austin, and I listen to you talk about the unfunded mandates from the federal government. Well, from my end, I remind you, when you yell about them, you're yelling about yourself sometimes too. And so, we know that we are a function of the state. We know that we have to perform the duties that you tell us we have to perform. But, so many times, we're giving those duties with limited funding or no funding, and we have to do it. And I know after this last session, there was some things said, where state representatives jumped up and said, "We did not raise your taxes, but by the way, counties, you have to do this, this, and this, and you may have to in order to do it." And it puts us at the local level in a really big fight.
Questions?
We call that running for reelection.
Yeah, but then hell, my reelection.
Thank you, Judge. Any further questions for the panel? If not, public testimony on this one. All right, thank you, guys, we appreciate it. Okay, good, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, perfect.
Oh, are you? All right, so we'll move on to the next one. I'm not going to read the whole thing, spare you all the details. This is conducting legislative oversight of agencies, and this one is talking about specifically the eleven fifteen transformation waiver. Let's see, we've got Shana Spurlin, Associate Director, eleven fifteen anchor teams, Judge Breeden, Commissioner Fox, and Kevin Duramis, EMS. Shana, you want to start? Come up and state your name and who you represent for the record.
My name is Shana Spurlin. I'm an Associate Director with the Texas A&amp;M University Health Science Center. We are the anchor advocate or anchor team representatives for two regions under the eleven fifteen waiver. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today about the eleven fifteen transformation waiver from the perspective of the Texas A&amp;M University Health Science Center. We are talking today related to our role as the anchor for Regional Healthcare Partnership seventeen. RHP seventeen is a nine-county region. It covers Brazos, Earlson, Grimes, Leon, Madison, Montgomery Walker, and Washington Counties. Today, I'd just like to spotlight a few of the benefits, successes, and key challenges and considerations related to the waiver that we've seen from the rural region perspective, because we are a rural region. And I'll keep my oral testimony brief. Additional details are outlined in the written testimony that is previously shared with you, and then I'm happy to answer any questions. Some of the benefits of the waiver, y'all actually touched on it a little bit earlier, the chair, Coleman, text from those. But, things we've seen in general at a regional level, increased collaboration among partners and providers. We've seen the waiver help break down some of the silos that are traditionally existing, and this has been especially true among not just direct care providers, but also community partners who provide social services that are, you know, in need and important to the health of patients. Particularly to rural communities, we've seen the waiver help expand care and access to areas that, you know, have a hard time retaining and recruiting staff, same thing you heard at the jail earlier, same thing with healthcare. It's increased healthcare infrastructure, especially in smaller rural counties. And done that through local examples, like telehealth counseling, community care medicine, which we'll all touch on, which we worked in Washington County about that, as well as product of these management programs and things that didn't previously exist, especially in rural communities. And then particularly, the waiver has helped offer services to patients who either wouldn't have qualified or where funding was restricted before, and this is especially true in mental health. And so, that's something that we heard earlier. But, local mental health authorities are typically, they receive disious funding that is limited to certain conditions they can care for, bipolar, major depression, and schizophrenia. What the waiver does is has allowed some of those centers to provide mental health services and programs that they cannot use disious funding for, that are just as important and more prevalent in a lot of ways, like minor depression, other mental health issues. And then to provide programs such as transitional housing, or other things that help mental health patients deal with their conditions, and be easier, reintegrate their society, be more productive, if you will. So, that's a benefit of the waiver. So, successes in terms of infrastructure would be this regional healthcare partnership setup, and having an anchor liaison. The sheer volume of information and the nuances of the waiver, like any program, are massive. And it's, we believe, and I think that our counterparts here would agree, that it's been useful to have a central anchor organization, and have a state split into twenty regional healthcare partnerships, to help disseminate that, be that liaison between the state of Texas and your key stakeholders. Additionally, the waiver has allowed innovative program types for themes like telehealth and telemedicine, which help rural communities, and particularly, especially here in Washington County, programs like advanced community paramedicine. And Kevin and the judge and the commissioner will share some details with you on how that's benefited this particular community. The community paramedicine is an innovative program type that helps to provide patient evaluation services to patients who are at a high risk of disconnect from normal institutionalized services. These are patients that may have socioeconomic factors like transportation or housing issues, or just lack of access to care, and so, their primary care physician is in an emergency department, or she uses nine-one-one services. That places a heavy burden on the county infrastructure if they run the nine-one-one, and then, of course, it increases uncompensated care that we see in our emergency services. Paramedicine is a way to take advanced trained paramedics to provide those services and care coordination, help with management, and it also allows them for better use and to free up resources like nine-one-one for true emergencies in an area. Of particular interest to this type of program are rural communities in Texas who have no healthcare facility within the county lines. Here in Region seventeen, Robertson and Leon County don't have a single hospital facility within the county lines of their region, so this is a big program that kind of makes the communities like that.
One second, we have a question from Representative Stickler.
Just to ask a quick question. Does that in, you know, in Tarrant County, where I'm from, we have a lot of, like, emergency clinics? Those are the new fab that aren't necessarily hospitals, but they're, you know-
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is different than that. So, you have those freestanding-
Do y'all have those? Are those popular in the rural areas?
They're in rural in popularity. So, Caprock is a big one in Brazos County that started building facilities, and freestanding ERs. I, you know, we could look up and provide you some more information on that, but I can tell you that with freestanding ERs, the way we understand it, they build the same way an emergency room does. And so, you're not necessarily saving on things or anything if someone walks in there and they weren't insured, covered by certain services. Now, they're not allowed, I believe, to go for like Medicaid, Medicare. So, again, they're really only serving private insured patients in those-
Or cash.
Yeah. So, there is a paramedic for Tarrant County. But, with paramedicine, you're helping to navigate, and you're helping to reduce that vulnerability in the nine-one-one system, which Kevin can elaborate on, and then also that inappropriate use of an emergency room in itself. Some key challenges to the waiver is IGT availability. That interbar bill trades about local dollar that you need to leverage federal funds. It's been a problem in rural communities and regions, and it's going to continue to be with waiver and rural extension. We're a rural region considered tier four, is what they call the rural regions. And in our case, we only receive two, less than two percent of the total allocation to the state, meaning a waiver which would have been two hundred and sixteen million dollars. And we had to give a hundred million of that back, because we did not have the local funds to be able to maximize. And that's going to continue to be a problem for the reasons we heard.
And if you don't, you may not know the answer to this, but when those dollars go unused or unmatched, because of the local stuff, do they go back into a pot where other regions who have more are then pulling those down? Or are they just off the table altogether, federally?
So, for the waiver in general, early on, those dollars that we gave back were made available to other regions in the state, so that Texas could maximize that. We did have a portion, there were funds in D I two when this was first getting started, that did go unused, that the federal government didn't let us take advantage of at that time. But, for the most part, funds that went from a rural region, they did go back into the state pot, and so, larger regions were able to access those advantage T dollars. So, the state overall can benefit from them. That will remain, though, as I mentioned, a challenge, in having the money to lever that going forward. IGTs is local funds are an issue. And then, really, a big challenge for us under the waiver has been reimbursement for some services and truly innovative programs like paramedicine. Or, in some cases, there are opportunities to improve reimbursement mechanisms that would help maybe possibly expand like telehealth services and things like that. We know that the legislature has made great strides on telemedicine. They did a lot in the last session in helping with reimbursement in that regard. But, there are ways where perhaps innovative programs that we're seeing, like the use of doctoral students, could actually become something that's reimbursed outside of, say, formal internships, to help expand that program. And with paramedicine, there's currently outside of the waiver, there's no way for those services, which are super beneficial, to be reimbursed. They are not eligible right now to be covered benefits, and even here, they're not eligible for rural reimbursement processes through G I T, like the regular EMS program. So, those are going to be challenges that we have now, and challenges that continue going forward. And there are particular interests against rural communities, that's a program that's really benefiting rural Texas.
So, there's no pots that you feel like you can apply for a grant or any of that stuff?
It's possible that an organization could go and seek out, say, a block rate or community rate for something else. There's not any that we know of designed specifically for paramedicine.
I know one of the frustrating things that we've worked on, or that I've worked on with Chairman Coleman, is increasing funding for mental health. We've been doing that, and we'll continue to do that. But, you know, we were very upset that a lot of the money that we had put aside in the eighty-third, two sessions ago, we found out was just left sitting on the table, and was being used to certify the budget, and that no one had even applied for the grant money. And, you know, when we're talking about tens of millions of dollars, was reported that, you know, we intended to go to mental health for programs like you're talking about, innovative things, that I specifically think rural communities could benefit from, that just wasn't being done. So, I'm just curious, you know, is there a way that we need to do a better job of letting you know what's available, and getting creative with you? Because, you know, I don't know what it's at currently, but that has been a problem of the past, that there were opportunities that were sitting there that were never taken advantage of. Which I think is harder for rural areas, because you don't have the staff and the support to even know, you know, all these changes that happen on a regular basis. But, so I'd be curious to know if there were some things that we could do for y'all there.
Better education as well, reaching out about opportunities.
It's certainly possible, and I'll just throw this out, assuming that wasn't necessarily the workable, maybe as I thought. But, perhaps you could utilize, perhaps you could utilize the anchor structure to do that. If you, you know, one of the things we do is disseminate information, or we have H I T C to the state. But, if there are other programs and things out there that can go through the twenty anchors, so that it's a little smaller, and then we can in turn disseminate that to the healthcare providers and IGT entities in the state or in our regions, maybe a way to help get the message out.
I'm amazed at how many times this has happened. I mean, we're going through right now with the Swift Water Program, H B four that we set up in the eighty-third as well, and we put a couple billion dollars into there to allow local entities to borrow against to get supreme rates, and in some cases, just flat out cash, to go invest in water infrastructure. And my understanding is, is that every single person that has applied so far for those managing funds has gotten it, because they don't have enough applications to put out what they wanted to. And that's just amazing to me that, you know, I mean, that's money that's already been allocated and is sitting in a pot.
We would be happy to disseminate information, I'm going to go ahead and help get all my anchors there. But, I know, speaking for us, the same, we're two regions, which is eighteen counties, we would be more than happy to disseminate information when the money is available, and that would actually tie very well into some of what we're trying to do to help stakeholders as a waiver gets renewed, which is find ways for these programs to be sustainable. And, you know, I, stakeholders have heard me say, or providers have heard me joke, you know, there's a lot that goes into sustainability for a provider, but the million-dollar question is where do you get the million dollars for a lot of these programs? And so, that may be more-
And how do you plan on a grant that may last two years? And that's been the problem, you know, with the eleven fifteen waiver, which I'm a fan of in general. I think it's worked well, but there's just uncertainty. How do you go out, especially in a rural community? You know, in Tarrant County, it's not as big of a deal, but you go out and you build for services, and a year later, you find out that money is not coming in again, and all of a sudden, you've got infrastructure that you can't support anymore, and it's dormant.
Yes, sustainability is a key theme, which, that actually would take this rigorously into consideration for a waiver renewal. You know, a basic thing is, we appreciate the efforts of H I T C that secured the recent fifteen-month extension with CMS. So, we know that we have funds for the coming year, we know that the waiver's approved to go through December twenty-seventeen. As conversations take place, negotiations for something more long-term, which we know is nuanced, there's a lot of components. But, we would ask that consideration be given, or argument made related to the sustainability component. CMS wants sustainability, we all do, we need more time. It took two and a half years to get the terms of the original waiver formally approved, in terms of every project. So, you actually have disparate projects out there that have only been fully implemented or ongoing for a year, a year and a half, and you really need more time, when these were programs that were intended to be three or four years, to really be able to demonstrate an outcome, and for us to show and tell the story in Texas of how much the laborers do need overall, and how our group of population help. And aside with that, and when you're doing something too transformative and innovative, if it hasn't been done before, you don't know yet how to sustain it. You don't know all the components that you need, and what you have, and what you need for maintenance after you get the infrastructure replaced. So, a full renewal of the waiver would allow people to work on that sustainability component. And in cases where we might need legislative action, like forced community care medicine reimbursement, it allows the state of Texas the time and the right process to make those changes, to be able to help support and sustain some of these programs. So, we would encourage, especially to your rural communities, and that thought when the state continues conversations with CMS for sustainability. And then additionally, we'd like consideration, from the rural perspective, we support the consideration of allowing new projects under a waiver renewal extension, specifically for rural regions that were IGT poor, and to implement practice program projects in areas that they don't already exist. And I can give you a perfect example for our regions here. Grimes, Leon, and Robertson County have all expressed interest in being able to replicate what Washington County's doing at some point, in, you know, implementing paramedicine. None of them have formal disparate projects in their communities. It's not that they may not be benefiting with patients there for some of the others, but they don't actually have this that's being implemented in their communities. And this is a practice proven model. This isn't something that we have to go to CMS and say, "We think it might work." All over the state, it's been proven to work, and we'll hear more about that in some of the details with Kevin. Thank you for your time, do you have any other questions?
I've got a couple of questions. I always harp during session about the differences in rural Texas and how things work. They're going to get tired of me talking about this. But, I always like to mention that things just happen differently in rural Texas because of smaller budgets, smaller work staff, smaller, lots of things. But, I noticed something in here that I want to point out, that we've done a lot of work on, is workforce development and training, and I see that you've got some of that in here. Can you talk a little bit, expand a little bit about the workforce development and training that are coming underneath the eleven fifteen waiver?
Sure, I'll try to keep my little under five minutes, so, I'll get back. So, as you heard, you don't, with every, just about every aspect of, I think, you know, rural infrastructure, it's the challenge to recruit and retain staff. We heard it with jails, we know it's that way with healthcare. You know, Kevin can share some stories, you get someone in, you train them, and then that makes them marketable, and then the community can go somewhere else. So, that is a big challenge, and we even have that challenge at the Texas A&amp;M Health Science Center, because we don't own, for example, we don't own our own teaching hospital. So, and we're in rural communities, we love that aspect. We need to be able to partner with community organizations and find training opportunities for the healthcare force of tomorrow, and the workers of tomorrow. And so, those partnerships are very important, and looking at innovative ways to do that, one of the things that you can do is if we can find ways to incorporate more ancillary level or postgraduate level students into that training and/or that reimbursement, there's the potential there for, you know, an opportunity where you have people who, they want the experience, and they want to go somewhere rural. You can replicate programs we've seen be successful in the state of Texas, like nursing training and doctor training, where you can go back to your home community, you know, you mentioned being fifth generation. There are people that want to go back. So, mental health is a big thing. So, for example, using doctoral students for psychological counseling, and offering opportunities that are reimbursable for organizations outside of just the ones that are reimbursable as a formal internship, where internship slots might be limited. Then they may have a situation where they're providing the exact same service under the same type of supervision, but there wasn't a formal internship available. That's an opportunity for you potentially to explore and partner and work with universities or other health institutions around the state to try to provide opportunities in that way. And you have people that are hungry for the experience, they want the experience.
So, am I hearing you correct in saying that sometimes- So am I hearing you correct in saying that sometimes the title of what is open is affecting the ability to be reimbursed under the eleven fifteen waiver?
So, don't get me in the line, but, uh, I, and I can get you some more information on this, for example, doctoral students. It's my understanding, so we actually have a telehealth counseling center and one of our local community partners is Washington County. And the judge can share some information on that. We're also in Leon and Centerville, we're in Grimes, uh, in Amesota. And we use doctoral students, um, to provide psychological counseling via telehealth connection. So there's that rural connection to bring that service to those rural communities. And right now it's our understanding that that service isn't reimbursable because that's not a formal internship. We work off of a basis where they apply to work at our telehealth counseling center where they volunteer their time. We don't have a formal internship slot. And so under a formal internship, it's our understanding someone can build for that service whereas, you know, we couldn't.
Would it be fair to say that you feel that the current guidelines of the eleven fifteen waiver are too restrictive? And it would be better served if it was more of a block grant to the county type?
So for this particular issue, it's not the eleven fifteen waiver guidelines that are restricted. It would just be the, the normal course of reimbursement guidelines for liberals that govern those types of services. The eleven fifteen is actually allowing us to put those services.
And are those state or federal?
Uh, it may be both. I would actually have to follow our, uh, psychological, the doctor that was at program might have for you, but I can certainly do that follow up.
And if it's as simple as changing the name of something, then that should be pretty simple in some cases, but.
One other question, I'm asking you way out on a limb here, okay? We, there's always discussion about will there be an extension, will there not be an extension every time this comes up? Broad stroke here, if there was not an extension and these funds are not available, what does the landscape look like at that point?
So the, the good news that I would need to just see negative with CMS is that beyond December twenty seventeen, should the state and the federal government not reach a formal renewal for, for the waiver, then we should see a twenty-five percent ramp down. And this is just speaking for district, there would be some sort of scale down for DC, but we don't know what that would look like. But for the district projects we're talking about, the beds have put in the letter of the state that there would be a ramp down beginning immediately in twenty eighteen of twenty-five percent per year for total funds. So the total funds right now are three point one million dollars for district, that's a statewide level. Um, that's what was renewed for next year, DY six. So if there was a renewal, we would anticipate that twenty-five percent, so we'd be operating on seventy-five percent for what we call DY seven, then fifty percent DY eight, and then twenty-five percent for DY nine to, to try to help allow programs to ramp down. So we know that there'll be some funding to ramp the programs down. But if you have a program, um, where you don't have other components for reimbursement or you can't find those block grants or something along those lines, then it's really hard to predict that they wouldn't be able to maintain the services. So we're not sure what that would look like. Probably the biggest components here are going to be those that have no reimbursement mechanism like paramedicine. Um, and then those mental health services we talked about that are being provided with waiver dollars because they're not eligible for providing under vicious dollars.
Is the retention of medical professionals in rural Texas, is the main motivator finances? I mean, I heard you say that if we offered more training and programs and what have you, I mean, is that really why they're not coming here? Because there's not good training or is it a money, is it just a money deal?
It, it comes back to just incident in general, which I think we learned too. So part of it is going to be funding, you know, and then sometimes, um, a challenge in, in the rural landscape is just, you know, opportunities for those, those that have families or, you know, some people want to be in a more urban, retro area. And so we've got to figure out what we can do to get and identify those people that really do want to be in the rural community and stay there. Um, and so sometimes it could be, we, we just have to identify the incident. And I, and I think there are ways to build on what we've already done with nursing and saying medicine, where you, you allow municipality or someone to encourage them through helping with funding of education or something for so many years to get into the community. The hope then is you stay in your community for four years and then you want to stay there, but I don't have any big answers.
Yeah, I mean, I hear about, I hear that all the time and I, and I don't want to discount it, but, you know, it, these, these folks are highly educated and they're making good money, you know, and typically they, I would imagine that they would like some of the amenities of living in more of an urban area or what have you and not see as much benefit. So, you know, I've got, I've got friends who are doctors who've gone up to Alaska because Alaska's paying a whole lot more money. Uh, they have to, to get coverage and, um, they go up there for X number of years, make a ton of money and then come back to where they want to go. So I'm just, I'm just curious on does throwing money at the problem, because I agree it's a problem, does that solve anything? Or are there other issues that we're missing here? I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
We could certainly, um, follow. One component to recruitment too is, uh, for at least on the medical side of things, you know, is, is how many, I mean, how many GME slots there are. So you can only recruit as many people as you can get into a partner hospital or something like that. So, um, there's other components or facets to it.
If I can answer a little bit of the question, because I've been on both sides of this, born and raised in the area. Um, and then after law school, I made the choice to move back, um, and open a law firm in, in Caldwell, um, Burleson County. And so the, it was a transition and I was from here, okay? I knew what I was coming back to, but it was a transition moving from, I'd lived in South America, I'd lived in Houston. Those places coming back to this small rural area was a transition even for someone that was from here. The opportunities, the, uh, social opportunities, all those sort of things are very different than, than elsewhere. Um, and so what I always remark is if you're not from a rural area, you don't just wake up and say, I want to be a doctor in La Grange, Texas. It just doesn't, you don't even cross your mind there. So that's why recruitment is a big deal, but that's one of the other issues is it's also from the societal cultural perspective. Um, it's just very different.
There are some benefits, I mean, you can.
Oh, of course.
You know, cost of living or, or property values, I'm sure, you know, you get a lot more for a house here.
Lots of other wonderful trade-offs as well, that's right. But that's part of it as well is it is a transition to, to come back to an area like that.
Thank you.
Other questions, sorry. Judge Breeden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members, John Breeden, Washington County Judge. Uh, after that, I'm actually going to kind of head a little bit different than I planned initially. But let me start off by saying the way the eleven fifteen waiver developed was, it, it kind of was, okay, we appropriated and then here's the beginning of the fiscal year for federal government. And there's no rules. In fact, they didn't put the rules out for months. And then the state says, okay, here's what's going on, y'all need to start applying. And the rules were changing. It, it, I felt like we were trying to build the airplane as we were flying. That's the way it unfolded. And, and so I think that, that it was, it was difficult from that aspect from the very beginning. I think the other thing is, is, is they emphasize innovative programs. And, and I want to talk a, a little bit about the innovative programs in Washington County. There's a couple and I'm going to really gloss a little bit and then allow the next two to, to expand on, on that. But, uh, Washington County recognized some years ago that, and I, that I'm not talking about twenty or thirty, I'm talking about ten years ago, eight years ago, recognized that we had some underserved people and that we needed to try to have a program that would keep them out of the emergency room as their primary care provider. And, and so we developed a community clinic and we did it in cooperation with our local hospital. And the idea was they would put a practical nurse, a licensed practical nurse and a nurse's aide, three afternoons a week in our community clinic to see people and to refer them when it was something beyond what was necessary or what was, that they could handle and, and try to keep them out of the emergency room and go from there. What we've developed in, in that community clinic is the building now houses, uh, public health nurse, the WIC program, a medical, a medicine assistance program, uh, our faith mission and food bank. Uh, all of this is housed together and, and we try to make it a one-stop shop type thing for these folks. So they either get all of these different services while they're there or we certainly can refer them to the proper place. We have taken advantage of Texas A&amp;M Health Science Center's telemedicine, uh, and we have that set up there. We have one psychiatrist that resides and practices in Washington County and the hospital employs him. And his primary function, because it was costing them so much when people would come into the emergency room and they would have to have an evaluation before they could be committed, uh, it, it was costing them so much, they found it cheaper to have their own psychiatrists. So he's not out there in the community practicing, he's working at the hospital. And, and, and that's it. So when we tried to worry about services, it's just, they're not here. And so that, that tele, uh, uh, counseling is a big thing for our community. Uh, MHMR comes two afternoons a week, uh, to see folks here. And, and, and it's not nearly enough. And, and what we've tried to do is take the, the, the simpler cases, and I say that major depression, you know, things of that sort, and leave them schizophrenia and the major stuff of that sort. So that, that's the way we, we've tried to unfold it. It's, it's part of our, our community health clinic funded by the county and funded by our local hospital in partnership.
And I think, I think there's, we've, we've been going in the direction, but I hope that the legislature continues to remove restrictions on telemedicine, uh, because it is clearly, um, going to improve access and drive costs down if you look at the model. We're not, we're not where we need to be yet.
It's a big thing for rural Texas.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. It, it allows us to have somebody in our area treated.
Sure.
That would have to be making a trip otherwise and which is complicating.
And in most cases would never make the trip. And, and most cases would then call nine-one-one and end up in jail or blah, blah, blah.
Yes, sir.
There's still a lot of work to be done.
When, when eleven fifteen came out, we, one of the things that Washington County talked to the hospital and we put a hundred thousand dollars of IGT money that comes back to our local hospital and they've expanded the, the, the licensed practical nurse and they've expanded the hours that they're there and actually bring some doctors occasionally to, to see, uh, patients and stuff there. And so it's been an expanded program of actually what we already had started, but we feel is an innovative program. Other people here say, wow, I wish that we could do something like that in our communities. And, and it's something that we're doing. And Commissioner Fox has been a big part of that since the very beginning of the community, uh, uh, health center. And I'm going to allow her to speak more about that. Um, our, our EMS director came to me about five years ago and he said, I'm going to run a pilot and I'm going to try to change something that's going on. I'm going to have to look because I don't remember the number. Our frequent flyer was what, twenty-some odd trips the year before?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. This person had twenty-seven ambulance rides to the emergency room in the previous twelve months. And Kevin said, I'm going to pick him as the pilot program. We're going to see, can we affect that? And what Kevin started doing is, is visiting with him and, and how are you doing, uh, you know, are you?
Was it mental health related or?
Actually, no, it wasn't mental health. It was just, it was off of medications, hadn't seen the doctor. And so he would check on it, you need your medication, let me call up there and let's get that refill and I'll take you up to get it and bring you back home. You need to see the doctor, let's call and make that appointment. He started doing it and in that year afterwards, we had what, three trips? Three, three trips. So we knew we cut, and can you imagine, twenty-seven ambulance rides at however much it is each one, and Kevin can tell you, and twenty-seven emergency room visits that we cut to three. We saved substantial money. And so we were already looking at expanding in that advanced community paramedic. We wanted to train people to be able to go out and work with the local doctor and things to make those things work. And, and we already had that in mind, along comes eleven fifteen, we're able to, to be able to do that kind of program. And, and because we were already thinking about, already designing something, already saying, here's the way that training would need to look to prepare these guys, we were able to jump out, take advantage of, of the program and be able to in fact make the advanced care, community paramedic program work in our county. And it in fact has been a fabulous success. One of our biggest problems is the federal government says, well, just stopping them from going in the ambulance rides and what, it doesn't meet our metrics, you've got to have other met, metrics. And in fact, that is not necessarily our biggest focus of that program anymore because they made us go to other metrics in order to meet their idea of what the program is.
And that, and I'm, and I, that's where I'm very curious, uh, as a conservative on where we can cut some of these rules and regulations, especially, I know we can't do stuff on the federal level necessarily.
And the hard part is they're, they're, they're the guys who's driving the boat. And, and we have found that the state has tried to, to figure out what they're going to do. And so they tried to make the rules enforce us so it wouldn't be a problem. And there's still with some problems that they, we had to deal with. So I, I, you know, I understand what you're saying and I would love to just be able to say, we want to do the program this way. They get out of our way and let us do it. The other side is, 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 I don't fault the folks at HSSC because they are being, they're squirming under the thumb of the federal government. That's the bottom line. And it looks like you want to ask a question.
No, 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 you've covered it.
Well, I, I wanted just to hit the high points because I've got two people that are more intimately knowledgeable to be able to explain those two pro, we're proud of those programs because we feel like we have innovative programs. We feel like we've in fact used eleven fifteen waiver for what it was meant to be. And in fact, we're making a difference in our community because we are using it. And Washington County stepped up when others said, we, we can't put money into it. We just, IGT sounds nice, but we just can't do it. We, we put some money in, uh, because we wanted these programs to build and we felt that the benefit would be there and we feel like it is.
Have any of the other counties done similar programs now where they're drawing down dollars? Is there a sharing of ideas, I guess, of best fact, best practice?
The advanced commer, uh, community paramedic is being copied by many. And I know that, uh, who was it, Montgomery County, Walker County, which one of those or both?
Montgomery County has a, uh, community paramedic project as well. Um, they're, they're part of our region, uh, their hospital, health district owns their EMS and so they're in community paramedic as well.
And they, they basically said, what are you doing? It looks like it's good, we're going to copy this.
Cleveland County.
Yeah, Cleveland County.
Yeah, and then you best ask him, he, he understands and knows the answer, so I'm loving my way through it. So what can I say?
He's kind of next to me.
Yeah. The commissioner has deferred to Kevin to come up first. So Kevin, you're, you're, you're in the hot seat. Come on up.
Thanks for having me, it's an honor to be here, a blessing to be here. Um, if you ever try to get out of San Antonio day in the morning, you understand the blessing behind that. So I wrote in here this morning to be here. Um, I'm, she's my phone friend first, and so when there's a question over the waiver, she's the go-to person and she laid that out great. So what, what I want to try to do is just, I have some notes and I'm not going to have to read all these to you, but what I want to try to do is give you a picture of a program, how it started, where it is today, and where it will be if the waiver's not renewed. Just to give you an idea. And the judge makes some good points about menu, if you want to call it the menu of the waiver program of what's allowed, but what's not allowed, what the metrics are. Those things certainly need to be hashed out and we need some more leadway. Uh, why is it that Montgomery County Hospital District can be a district provider and an IGT at the same time, but Washington County cannot? Even though they're an ESD where a county ran government, there was ever a CMS provider? So there's got to be a way that everybody can plug in the same sandbox the right way. That's above my paper. But, um, our program really started, the district program in, correct me if I'm wrong, started twenty-eleven, December.
December three eleven.
Um, so our budget runs July of every year. So July of twenty-eleven, I was before the court, just like I was this morning, expressing our needs for our budget. Um, during that time, um, it's a very conservative court. Um, we, we came to a crossroads in our EMS department to where call volume is doing this, revenue is doing this, um, staffing needs to do this to, to handle the call volume. It was kind of expressive, we need to find another way. Because our general staffing model, and the reason I'm laying this out here, is I think the ACP, the community paramedic programs, is not just a district program. The intent of the transformation waiver was to transform something, healthcare, into something that could sustain itself better after the program, after the district left. So what, what I'm trying to say is we tried to do that even before it was popular. Okay, the, the court came to me and said, fine, no different way to manage what we're doing. And at the time, we're running four thousand calls, I'm, I'm using ballpark, four thousand calls, using three ambulances, a couple supervisors, those kind of things. We needed an added ambulance to do that staffing. That cost our county around four hundred thousand a year to do that, a tax dollars to do that. It's fiscally unsustainable. And to, to continue public safety EMS using that general rule, call volume does this, add staffing, taxpayers can't do it. They didn't pay taxes in this county. You can't, can't continue to add just about the call volume. We spent the next ten months, Bling College was a big player of ours. They workforce education, someone brought up that, um, workforce education. And us, we sit down, we, we built a curriculum on how we could use existing resources in your community. Paramedics that are already working every day. If you wanna know the pulse of your community, ask a paramedic. They know where the really sick people are. They know where the not so sick people are. They know where the abusers are. And they know where to take them, for the most part. You, you brought up the health clinics in Jared County. Of course, we need, that, the, the community model is not to negate them from going there. It's actually to get them there instead of the emergency department. My kid gets official again, which he did over the weekend. I don't take him to the emergency department where I get a twelve hundred dollar bill. Twenty dollar copay at twenty four hour clinic is a much better process. What we're trying to do as a community paramedic is educate the communities how to navigate a convoluted healthcare system that my seventy year old grandmother cannot do by herself. It's beyond that at this point. They see a hospital sign. They know it's a hospital, a freestanding, a clinic or what? They go in, the bill ranges from twenty dollars to three thousand dollars, depending on which one you walk in. The community paramedic model takes those paramedics that understand that. It builds on their education level, of course. Hundred eighty hour curriculum is generally what we built that from. Workforce ed, kinda got involved with us and helped us create that. But at the end of the day, it takes patients that twenty seven times transport and he was a sick individual. Um, but he wasn't in mental health. He was just needed educated on what does and what does not require an ambulance transportation. Seventy seven thousand dollars is what he cost us over those twenty seven trips. That doesn't include his VA bills. Um, anywhere he was admitted, that's a very conservative healthcare dollar amount. We went to three times a year. Now we're down to about twice over the last two years, the same individual.
And I would imagine too, obviously, we're not even throwing into account the actual status of his health. I'm sure improved greatly not letting it get to the crisis situation.
Absolutely. The two kinds of needs transported were legitimate. One with a heart issue, one with a surgical issue. So, um, I, 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 you're absolutely.
How many, how many trips did, I'm just curious, how many trips did you have to take to keep, to cut it down by twenty five? Of the smaller trips without the ambulance?
Yeah, so I personally handled him individually. It's different for every patient. But for him individually, I always meet him. For a while. It was worth my time to figure that out. Did the unit out of service time of taking an ambulance to X hospital, that many times, it was worth us to figure that out. Now it's once a month. So we generally start them weekly, go to biweekly, go to twice a month, go to other once a month. Once we solve a problem, some that we always see, once a week.
And I would imagine most of your conversations with them now are just teaching him how to be personally responsible for his own health?
Absolutely. Yeah. So just to continue that trend, um, we're, we're now three, four years into a sustainable program as the district allows us to be. Um, and, and I'm just gonna give you a couple numbers because it's difficult to me, I'm very passionate about this. I'm watching the clock, but I don't wanna waste your time. I appreciate y'all being here. But it's difficult to me to express to you how, how hard it is to meet milestones and metrics that are laid out. Uh, because you're, you're generally dealing with the healthcare as a whole. District was not intended to be the rudder of the ship, as we would be called. EMS in the state is a very small portion. They drop literally in a bucket of the healthcare expenditures. But if we can grab the patient from entry and steer them the right way, we can make huge benefits. There's a very small number of patients. So we had four hun, we have a hundred sixty three patients in the program. All right. Um, we did five hundred nineteen home visits. We did twelve hundred nine one one responsive with them because they're not single. They have a paramedic behind their name for reasons, so they're doing nine one one calls too. Um, they did a hundred ninety eight jail medicine visits. So they go into the jail when the nurse is not there, help the jails administer their jail medicine programs at no cost to them. Um, and, and here's the key. When we prevented four hundred ninety one transports, nine one one transports to an ED. So when you do the conservative math, I'll have that's one point two million dollars. Okay? Of a program that is really just dealing with Washington County. The reason that it's not attractive to others is because most EMS directors look at me and say, you're crazy. Why are you doing this? You don't get paid unless you transport. And that's a, that's a fair statement. Medicare will not pay if I go pick up the sixty five year old grandma and treat her and fix her, even if it's a diabetic issue that we're very capable of treating. If I don't transport, the wheels don't turn. Then we don't get reimbursed. So there is no incentive.
Oh, the goodness of your own heart.
There is no incentive to, to take care of people and not transport them to the emergency department.
So you're saying that this program and the eleven fifteen waiver has been successful in incentivizing before it gets to that point?
Absolutely.
That's the way we have to go. Like you said, the model is unsustainable.
She's right. I can't bill for any of the services we're doing. Close medical monitor, flu co-checks, hypertension, low blood pressure. We can't bill for those services if we don't transport. But the waiver's providing funding that allows me to pay for the staffing to do that.
And instead of one point two million on ambulance that you're roughly estimating, what, what does that cost the taxpayer roughly?
Well, the original rollout here, again, I took transformation literally. And it used to say, I don't know if it still says, but use existing resources to transform healthcare in your community. We didn't add paramedics the first year. We used existing. So it didn't cost them anything more. We have since. Okay? Now we put rural community paramedics in Burton. When you travel through there on two ninety, there's a paramedic really close to you now. In Chapel Hill, the same thing. So we put them on each end of our county. That costs roughly a hundred eighty thousand dollars of true cost, of benefits. Now I'd love to pilot your Alaskan program and try to incentivize. Paramedics are getting paid more in rural areas. I'd love to go down that road. But right now, that's what the true cost for that is.
Cool.
And the district pays for that amount. So without it, I'm standing in front of the court saying, we've got this great program that works. We know it saves healthcare dollars. I can, and that, that's if they didn't get admitted to an ICU one time out of the four hundred ninety one transports. I know some of those would have been. So I can, I can quantify at least one point two million dollars of healthcare savings locally. Okay? So how do you tell a court, a commissioner's court, that you're going to seek budget funds for to keep those physicians? That without this, we're gonna have to pay for those physicians now out of local tax dollars. However, the proof is already there that it works. So are we cutting a program that we know is going to cost Medicare or another program triple if we take that tax dollar out? So, so there, there has to be some wheels spinning on that. If we had full radio for four years, I really believe in four or five years, we will be getting paid for these services that we're doing. It's just gonna take a while. It's gonna take legislation. It's gonna take us changing some of those things. If we stop it now, nobody's gonna jump on that ship.
Yeah.
So we're gonna continue the madness of really fiscally unsustainable model.
And do you believe it's scalable?
Absolutely. And I think it's different for every community. I don't think you can take what we did and put it in even call bill and make it work. It's gonna happen because it's, the healthcare is different in every community. What we have available to us here is drastically different than Brian Call's station.
And, and, and I'm sorry, just so I can wrap my, my head around it, these are, these paramedics are on duty and, and doing these, are they like home visits?
Yes.
Right? And are they, are they on call while they're, while they're out there? How, how does that work?
So what we've recognized in, in the audit that came out, the audit of our program said, they felt, I'm paraphrasing, but they felt that this program was particularly beneficial for rural Texas. Because typically, when the guys are not on a nine one one call, they're at a station house somewhere. And, and we don't have a whole lot of that downtown. I'm not just saying that because one of my bosses is in the room. But the truth is, we're running seven thousand calls a year, three and a half trucks, which is the same staffing model we did in twenty eleven because of the program. So it, it is that. But however, in rural, when, when I say rural, I don't mean Brenham, by the way. I mean Burton. That's rural for us, as rural Texans, right? So in that area where the population of the town is three hundred and ten, I don't know where Burton is now. Um, there's, there's more time for him to do home medicine visits in between nine one one calls than there is in Brenham. Eighty percent of our call volumes in Brenham.
Right.
Chapel Hill. So yes, sir. Those guys are out there doing close medical monitoring, home visits, if you wanna call it that, to diabetics, congestive, congestive heart failure, um, hypertension patients. Those patients that we know are gonna call us at three AM, why don't we call them at three PM?
Sure.
Go see them at our schedule instead of them calling at three. And then there's nothing open except an emergency room. So if we go see them at three PM, check, you know, you're, you're, you're near having an emergency. We need to call Dr. Sosa. So we sit down and navigate that. And help them get to a clinic during the daytime instead of three AM when they're nauseous, vomiting.
So how does that work in Brenham since it's, it's a different dynamic community? This, are you, we're doing this in Brenham also?
Yep. Right now, we're running three community paramedics in each of those districts. One inch.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand, 'cause I know San Antonio has that problem all the time, right? There's, we got regular, I'm a retired San Antonio firefighter. So we used to take tons of people all the time, regulars. We knew them by name, right? And they just go. And then we had the deal that a lot, in, in big cities, they wanna, they want the ambulance ride because they know they go right up to the front of the line. And they don't wanna go, and they have the means to go in their own car, but they don't wanna sit in a waiting room. They want that gurney to take them in the back so they can get treated right away. So I'm just trying to think, how would that work on a, on a, I see it now, now that, that you're explaining it. I can see how it works here.
It'll definitely reduce, it'll definitely reduce it. But I don't know if you need a picture that it's gonna fix, that the problem just is correct. We'll always have frequent flyers.
Right.
Right? That are always abusing the system. But some of them, that as we went to see them, the problem got worse. 'Cause they got the attention.
Sure.
So now you've got a community paramedic coming by every week. And then he calls nine one one every other week. So we were like, just drop, just note, well, and see what happens. Well, his volume went down. So there's some of them that are going to be that way. The program really is intended for the really sick ones that really do need navigating through a complicated healthcare system. And in the meantime, if we can fix some of those problems that you're describing, and they're in every town, that's not just San Antonio, Brenham, they're in every town, then it's a win win for everything. I'll, I'll entertain any questions. Thank you for your time.
Members?
Good.
Thank you.
Can I note something?
Yeah.
I think it's important to note, um, and I think Kevin might touch on it, but he needed a, they needed a new ambulance for that increasing call volume in twenty eleven. And paramedics has allowed them to maintain an increasing call volume and this paramedic program without a new ambulance that would've cost four hundred thousand four years ago.
Times three budget. So that's another one point two million of local tax dollars that I, that the program doesn't necessarily actually fix. But I'm not going to the court asking for that honey every year either, as I probably will go pretty soon and ask for that.
Commissioner?
I'd like to take my chance, 'cause, yeah, I'm not supposed to steal, but I'm a commissioner, I'm a wife in county, and I'm also a nurse. So I have a real, uh, uh, passion for this. And our, you know, Mr. Ray was taking this and, and taking the eleven fifteen waiver which has really done a big service for our community. I think this could really be something to help, instead of the Affordable Care Act, something like this could really help medicine in our country. Not only just our county, but in the state of Texas and our country. We could go and, and take a big step backwards. The home visits, like the doctors used to do when I was a little girl and things like that, and try to keep the patients well, keep them out of the hospitals. Uh, as far as MHMR part of it, there are things we can do if we extend the waiver, we keep extending it now, that we could work with MHMR, get more psychiatrists and things like that for our people. Our community health, our, our, um, telehealth, um, counseling has been really great. At the clinic we've done, we, we work both with Scott and White and with College Station Medical Center, with both of these projects we do. Scott and White does a health clinic that we're, that Judge Gruden's talking about. And with that, also, we have counselors through faith mission who, if we get people to come in there, they're having issues, they find out they might be helping for some other programs that they can go do to help them stay on the path and get out of problems that they're having and put positive in with, with their health and things like that. So. Anyways, if you had asked a question while I was over there, why we can't get doctors to rural areas? Well, with the Affordable Care Act, reimbursements, I know some nurses have gone down. And we even have doctors specialists who will not even take Medicare or Medicaid because they're getting nothing out of it. And the Affordable Care Act insurances, the, uh, what are they called? And there's some hospitals that have the Affordable Care Act insurances that won't even take the other ones. They don't take one certain one. So it's hard to get doctors to come out when they won't get reimbursed and they're, they're trying to come to rural area and the overhead is EMO and they're getting nothing.
My under, my understanding is, is the only way to make money on that is literally just a prop. Yeah, well, but if, if you're gonna take the Medicaid dollars right now, then you have to filter people in and out, in and out and out. And the rural areas can't sustain
No.
the flow of, of needed patients to justify, 'cause it's a, it's a numbers game, not a profit margin.
Right. So, like I said, this eleven fifteen waiver to me is, is such a good, if you take programs like this and programs like the health clinic where you get those to call clinical cracks and those who can't afford the exchanges and have a six thousand dollar deductible, they can afford six thousand dollars deductible so they can come to our free health clinic and get taken care of. So this is just such a great thing. And I just urge you all to please, anything you can do to extend this eleven fifteen Medicare Transformation waiver is just, it's been a help here. And we, Kevin's gone all over the country and talked about this and, and all over the state. And, and like I said, people are just really interested. I was just at a conference for the NARC, National Association of Rite and Counselors recently. And we're gonna get him to come talk to all of them because I was telling him a little bit about what we're doing here. And they're very interested all over the United States. So this is something that I urge y'all, I thank y'all for starting the eleven fifteen waiver. I urge you to keep it ongoing and know that we are the closest to the people and we're the most conservative of the government people around, as you were talking about, all the conservatives. And so we try to make our tax dollars go as far as we can 'cause we know our people paying for it, keep on paying that, have the property taxes. So thank you all for having us today. Like I said, they told the rest of the story. So I just wanted to wrap it up. That's why I let Kevin go first before me.
Thank you. Commissioner, thank you for doing cleanup there. We appreciate it. Thank, any other questions for the panel, guys? Thank you, guys, so much. We appreciate y'all coming out. Uh, public testimony on that one? Going once. All right. So the next one, uh, is our CPS. Um, we've got several different people. Christine Blackstone, Renee Mueller, our county attorney. Uh, Judge Berg had to leave, so it's just gonna be y'all two. Um, and, uh, but we appreciate it. Y'all come up. Whoever wants to go first, announce, uh, who you are, who you represent, and we'll go from there.
Good afternoon, representatives. I'm Christine Blackstone. I'm the new assistant CPS commissioner. Uh, I've been in my job for about eighty days.
All right. You're a seasoned veteran.
Yes. So I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you today in Brenham. We're going to, um, I think you have a presentation there in front of you or?
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am.
This mic up here where we see it. Uh, I'm gonna try and talk to you about a couple of critical components of the CPS performance and some items that may be of interest to you today. Uh, first, I'm gonna talk about, uh, some local, um, numbers, what we're doing here in Region Seven and this community and some local community partners that we have. Uh, I'm gonna talk to you about our challenges with placement and some solutions that we're working towards. And lastly, of course, we're gonna talk to you about one of the first topics of the child care community across the nation today, which is workforce stabilization. So on slide three, you can see, of course, the state of Texas is divided up into regions. And we're in Region Seven, the kind of like blues in the middle edge covers the whole country, thirty towns across the whole country. And Region Seven is near and dear to my heart because I was a caseworker here, supervisor here, program director and program administrator before I left to go to the attorney general's office. But, so I'm familiar with the region, though it's been some time since I've worked here, uh, in this region. On page, uh, slide four, you have the Region Seven expenditures. While the vast majority of CPS spending throughout the state comes from the legislature and federal government, ten Texas counties also contribute money from their own budget to fund specific programs in their area. And, um, here in Region Seven, states appropriated forty one point three million for the FBS programs. Federal funding accounts for fifty point nine million for all programs. And in addition, Hamilton and Bossby Counties have dedicated a combined pool of the thirty thousand paper staff, additional staff in that county. And we have several other counties throughout the state who offer some additional staff to serve their communities. As you know, child abuse and neglect is a community problem. And we really rely and can do anything without all of our community partners across the state. Uh, we work with foster parents and child placement agencies, CASA, educators, who work with, um, county and district attorneys, faith-based partners that we have across the state. It really takes all of these systems coming together to support, uh, children and youth who have been abused in the block. So I just wanna recognize that. A few different initiatives to point out that are going on here in, uh, Region Seven. There's, uh, a back to school batch that's being held in Travis County, as well as a back to school giveaway. There's occurring in McClaney County in August. These are events to help prepare children that are in foster care for back to school season. Recently, in- Recently, a child welfare board in McClanney County gave fifteen thousand dollars for children for back-to-school clothing. And additionally, there is a local nonprofit called Foster and Angels who received a donation of thirty, or solicited and received a donation of thirty five hundred diamonds of clothing that they donated to the Rainbow Rooms across this area. And lastly.
Yes, sir. Just a couple of questions real quick. So is that money that, uh, D F P S gave to those groups to go do that?
No.
Okay, so that's all on their own?
They'll go out and raise them.
Okay, so then, those are no tax dollars there.
That's right.
Um, on the Region Seven expenditures, um, I'm just trying to understand how, how does, uh, D F P S draw down some of these dollars? Is this set beforehand and given, no matter what, or like, are the daycare payments up based on the numbers that you have in the system in Region Seven, or, I mean, what are the parameters?
So, I wish I had my better person here with me, we draw down federal funds, and based on what we spend, we get a match sixty six, thirty four percent.
What you spend on, so like, you give them, your case worker has twenty-two cases, and divide that by twenty-two and give them, I mean, what, what costs do you mean?
So the costs associated with the direct delivery of services, uh, some other expenditures related to foster care payments and process.
So in general, if there was, um, if there was twice as many kids in some of these categories, would you be pulling down twice as much money, or?
For, for foster care payments, yes, children that fall into qualifying, what we call four E, total foster care payments, we'd be pulling down additional funds for those children.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the last thing I wanted to highlight, which you go over to Regions Seven, is we currently, uh, have a special project here working with the National Quality Improvement Center for Adoption and Guardian Support and Preservation. And this is a five-year research project to promote permanency for children who can no longer be reunified with their families, that are not yet in permanent placement. And the, it's basically to promote better outcomes for those children. In a sense, in essence, we'll train caregivers, um, how to better work with children who have experienced trauma and loss, and also train all of our, uh, community partners to better work with this population in order to promote better outcomes for those children. So that's, uh, Region Seven's specific project and its grant project. On slide six, you can see where the children in this area are placed. You can see that the number of children placed outside of the region and the number of children placed inside of the region. Uh, one of our highest priorities, of course, is to keep the children out of homes whenever possible, and, you know, we really work tirelessly at that, and it's also related to our capacity issue. But as you can see, for these children who are not in region, in Region Seven, the majority of the children are placed in region, and the largest number who are out of region are actually with kin, so they're actually with family members. And these numbers align to be closely with the statewide numbers that you would see. In child care, uh, it's provided to children by relatives or victims can, in about, a little bit more than forty percent of our cases across the state. And obviously, we think it's better if children could be with families, children have better outcomes when they live with their family members. They're more likely to be reunified, they're more likely not to bounce around, they're more likely to stay in the same schools, they're more likely to report feeling secure, um, loved. So for us, a relative is often the first choice, if it's viable, and that's where we go. And we have a really high number of children in relative care in Texas, over forty percent. And that number has grown steadily, um, over the years. So what that does, we have a high number of children who are in relative care, it changes the mix of children that are in foster care. So kids who, um, are more stable with less, um, intense needs regarding behavior, mental health, and medical diagnosis are more likely to be able to do this successfully with relatives, and so the children that remain in the foster care system have a higher set of needs. So that changes the mix, and that's part of what is putting stress on the foster care system, placing capacity. In the state, it's this changing mix of kids, uh, that we're seeing in foster care. Obviously, when kids can't live safely at home or with a relative, then we do have to look for foster care settings, and we have foster family homes, we have residential group care facilities, and obviously, this will be such a shop that, um, that we, that we use. But the foster care population has shifted, and it's a major challenge right now. We're taking lots of efforts with our private placement agency partners. Ninety-five percent of the placements in Texas are licensed through child placement agencies in the private system. Uh, we just have a small number of basic foster homes that D F P S actually licenses ourselves, and those are for basic needs kids, mainly for kids in some adoption homes. So we've been working very closely with our partners, we've been working on occupancy and needs analysis. And we actually are traveling the state right now, and, uh, each region of the state, city provider is talking about where the needs are, where the gaps are, and what we can do to better partner with them to take care of it.
Quick question, when you say that the, um, the population has changed within foster care, I understand what you're saying. But is it actually just a higher percentage of the people in foster care? But it's not, or do we have a total number of special needs kids that are in there as well? I mean, are we dealing with the same number, just a different percentage, because most of our guy, you know, the more, I don't want to use the word normal, but the, those folks are going more with kin, so we have a higher percentage, but we don't necessarily have higher numbers, do we?
That's right, now, the numbers of children in foster care in Texas have been pretty, or overall in substitute care in Texas have been pretty stable. But more children going to relatives, so the remaining children in the system are children with higher needs. Figure out, it's not by your number.
So are we finding it percentage-wise harder to place the more severely needy children at this point?
Those, those children aren't highly replaced, yes.
But are we finding it harder now? Has something changed with the foster, I guess, parents or homes?
Right, so I think there was a time about in two thousand five, two thousand six, and seven, when we saw the same thing happening, where we were really struggling to place children, um, with high needs, and then it seemed to stabilize for a while. And as I understand it, it's almost been growing for about the past year.
And so, because we're not dealing with a necessarily more, more special needs kids, it's just a larger portion, percentage-wise, what is, what is changing and making that harder in your opinion? Is it compensation, uh, for foster? I know there's a lot more financial needs with those children, um, what is, what is, what is making it harder?
Well, I'd say before, and you can, you know, so, let's say you have a group of foster homes, and previously, you have these same ten foster homes, but there were a mix of kids in those, in those foster homes. Some with more basic needs, and some with more complex needs. So that's kind of a balance for those ten foster homes' sake. But now, if the only children that you have to place are high-needs kids, those take more attention, uh, and they stretch those ten homes further. Say, you could take two basic and one complex high-needs kid, but maybe now the high-needs kid, you can't take two or three more high-needs kids. For example, that's one thing.
But would that suggest that we have, I mean, if it was the same number of high-needs kids, unless you're saying that kinship with, you know, high-needs kids has, has gone down percentage while the other has gone up? I guess, if it's the same number as it was before, just the percentage is different.
I think it's the mix of children that are in the system that's different.
Unless I'm missing something, it only makes sense to me if we're having, just a switch in the percentage of we now have more high-needs kids that we need to place than ever before. But I, I, I guess I'm not understanding, because I'm being told, not by just you, but other people too, that we're not necessarily, we don't have more kids, or we're not taking more kids into the system with special needs than before, it's kind of stable and it's the same. But all of a sudden, this is a problem, so I'm just trying to get to, what, what is driving that problem?
Actually, I don't think that that number, I think before, we had a broader range of kids, right? So the group of kids that are now in kinship homes were all from the foster care system before. So, I mean, I see what you're saying to some extent.
But even if, even if, if, if there were ten special needs kids that they needed to place, but then there were also, you know, ten other kids that weren't special needs, would still have the same number of special needs kids that would need to be placed as before. It's still ten, even though it's half and half percentage-wise, and now it may be a hundred percent over here. Do you see what I mean? So I'm just curious, you know, we're trying to get to the bottom of, how do we fix CPS and a number of these different things? And I think this is part of it, is why, why are we having a hard time placing some of these children? Because I think part of the concern is, is that we're placing them in places now where we're lowering our standards, and some bad things are happening. So how do we, what is, what is causing it to be harder for us to place these children? Is it strictly financial, that the people who are taking these kids on then don't have the funds to, to take care of them appropriately?
You know, I've been meeting with providers quite a bit, um, in my first year, been on the job, and, you know, they do have, um, they do talk about rates. Uh, we're currently working to look at the methodology at which rates have been set, and study that, and see what it needs to be for the system as it stands today. So that's, you know, one issue. I think, uh, you know, we're looking at some other solutions for these kids, identifying these children earlier on, so that we can wrap services around them more quickly to prevent them from having growing problems and, and placement. And then foster care reason, I think it's been a very promising path, as it's turned down here at the neck of the woods, uh, to have one provider who's in charge of these children and works with foster child placement agencies in that area, a single contract, uh, that serves the needs of these children, and their, um, results have been very promising.
So you're a fan of what they're doing up there?
I do, I mean, I think that their results speak for themselves, they have some, you know, we have, they've improved residential capacity in that area by three hundred beds. Uh, seventy-one percent of the children entering foster care in that area stayed in the area prior to foster care redesign, it was forty-three percent. And ninety-four percent of the children so far are managing to repair replacements.
So is that something that you would pull the trigger on in Region Seven if you could?
Yeah, so we're currently working on an implementation report that probably might involve foster care design, and certainly, we're working on our L I R, uh, and, um, be submitting that here in the next five, six weeks, I think.
Cool, thank you.
So speaking of foster care reason, that was where I was kind of going next, is some of our solutions, because you're right, I, I think it's a complex problem, I'm not sure if there's a simple answer, and I think we have to attack it on many fronts. But certainly, foster care redesign is one of the solutions that we are looking at. We're also, um, implementing a child adolescence needs and strengths assessment on September first. Every child will receive, if a child three-year-old or older will receive the, uh, within forty-five days of coming into care. So I'll have a consistent kind of assessment that we're using with our children, and everyone will get used to seeing it, will know how to read it. All of our providers will see the same thing about our children, and then we'll be able to, uh, reuse that tool year after year to see the progress of the children remaining. So it's a trauma-informed assessment that provides uniformity and consistency in evaluating our children that's in the system. And I think this may go a long way with helping us identify, um, issues and concerns of children's needs, their strengths, what we can draw on, uh, a lot of, uh, so that we make the right decision choices. Additionally, we're working on a single child planning service, and the system today, currently, the department develops a planning service, and the child placement agencies develop a planning service, so we're kind of duplicating work. Whereas if we all came together and said, what does this child need, let's all do this together, make one planning service, we also feel like that'll go a lot further, less duplication of effort, more efficient, and get everybody on the same page from the beginning of the case. And that was a recommendation, uh, from the Stevens Group. And we'll be implementing that in the, uh, this time of year. We've been working with our providers to get everybody on board and on the same train, and it looks like we're all on the same train right now. And then lastly, we're also looking with three placement providers, thirty-six different placement providers, and pioneering a performance-based monitoring, uh, contract project. Right now, we're in the midst of identifying what the measures will be for outcomes that we will hold accountable for the purposes to enhance safety, permanency, well-being, normalcy, and those will be the outcomes, uh, that we're looking for, and we'll be, um, talking in the legislature to prove it about what is going to happen with the program.
I think that's a great idea, and, you know, I, it's just, it's, it's very frustrating at what we have asked people to do and what we have overlooked as far as, you know, them bringing stuff back, their work. We judge them on the wrong parameters, in, in my opinion, in so many different cases, and we've made the job next to impossible. Um, so I, I think, I think that's a great idea. I'm curious about, uh, just one side note, and I don't know if you're the right person to ask or not, or if somebody else is, but, um, what is CPS being asked to do that they shouldn't be doing? For instance, um, the E R is being asked to take care of someone with a headache, or the police department is being asked to deal with mental health issues. What is CPS taking the role on, because we've mandated or know what else is doing it or whatever, that could be done more efficiently or better than CPS has the ability to do? In your opinion, and maybe it's for somebody else, but.
Yeah, I, I'll say, I think during the last session, as I understand it, there were a number of things that we worked closely with the legislature on to kind of streamline or make more efficient. And, and in the short time I've been here, I haven't seen something that I didn't feel lies squarely in the mission, uh, protecting children that we're doing. I think we have, um, that's a huge, very key task, and I don't know that I'd say that there's, uh, a large identifiable piece of work that has been.
One thing that comes to mind is, is because I think almost all of us would agree, there's a funding problem with D F P S right now. And where that money needs to go is kind of where we're debating, but, um, you know, would it, one of the answers to this problem could be that CPS, um, is taking more children than we should, because if we did this before it ever got to that point, it would be far cheaper, like the gentleman talked about on the emergency, you know, uh, the ambulance service. Is there something that we can be doing beforehand in another sector outside of CPS to lower the amount of kids so that the workload isn't as high, and dealing with some of those other things? I really, really, really desire for that to be part of the solution in CPS, that I will be very disappointed if this is simply just, let's write a bigger check. Because I think we all agree that that's it, but when you talk about the models, and like he said on, on the trajectory, we're going to be back here four years from now dealing with the same things if we don't change the system. And I, I really hope that we will view it as a success if we ask CPS to do less. And, and in my opinion, that is, we need to be doing something, and I don't exactly know what it is, before CPS is ever involved. And I have a feeling that that'll be far cheaper and far less traumatic for the children and, and everybody else involved. But I don't know what that is.
Well, I, I don't know if you've seen our commissioners' letter to the governor that included his kind of ten-point plan, and one of those items was prevention or intervention. And we have, uh, robust, some robust programs out there that have been presumed to be effective, uh, whether they're reaching as many, as you say, uh, to prevent children from coming into our system anyway. I think you could hear from a lot of applicants about that, that we need to, uh, grow prevention and intervention in order to keep children out of foster care. So I think that is one way that we slow down the front door for sure. And the last thing I wanted to speak with you about today is, of course, we're trying to work for stabilization. As everyone knows, the turnover at CPS has devastating impact on our system. Case is getting, if we focus with the caseworkers, stress on other caseworkers, which indeed leads itself to more turnout. On slide eleven, you can see the turnover data, this is just for the second quarter of this fiscal year. It's pretty consistent on what we've been seeing for quite some time, though. CPS has divided into, uh, eleven regions, you can see the statewide percentage is twenty-three percent turnover. Here in Region Seven, it's a little bit lower than that, twenty-two point five percent turnover. Um, each region is different, and local and economic issues, regional issues also play a part in this turnover. You can see in the Leno Baca area, has a little bit of higher turnover, Baca, place where it's easy to find high-paying jobs. Um, and also, worth noting. And also worth noting, this doesn't break it out as a state of the service, but it's almost always hired for investigations and for the in-home or conservatorship workers as well. On slide twelve, you'll see region seven specific information. And as you can see in this slide, it's really heavily weighted towards workers who have less than five years of experience. Most of the experience we see happens in that timeframe. But one of the real strengths in this region, as you might know, is that these supervisors have a lot of tenure. Conservatorship supervisors have almost ten years of tenure. Family-based safety services are in-home caseworker supervisors with almost twelve years. And investigation supervisors average over seven years of tenure. So that's a pretty strong supervisor tenure. The worker tenure, of course, gives you more pause. For me, this last placement, turnover is another one thing that we have to, or get a handle on and reduce. Just has an impact on families and outcomes. There are several things that contribute to turnover, of course. And what we hear from caseworkers early, it's concerns about the working conditions and their own safety, their pay and benefits, and supervision. So these are, you know, the three things that are reached regularly and consistently identified by people walking out the door. So concerns about working conditions and safety and stress. We have implemented an office of worker safety that has been being counted in the San Antonio area. And they specifically help management deal with cases with heightened security concerns or after incidents occur, to help workers cope with the adverse events of any incident that they encounter, make sure that the reporting that needs to be done is done, and follow up on those. So that's a really exciting development for our managers, who sometimes struggle with knowing what to do to support them to preserve their specialty and expertise in child safety, and so having to make sure that their workers are safe. This gives them an additional tool. Additionally, we're rolling out a six signal app. It's a yellow cord, it's like a tether, you plug it into your iPhone. And when you're out in the field, you can put your location in. And if you're at a client's house or anywhere that you are, and something happens, you pull the cord, and within thirty seconds, if you don't enter a code, it will alert like a home alarm monitoring system, and that will trigger over to nine-one-one. And the calls to nine-one-one under the guise of it's protective services worker who is in danger. So this is really exciting for staff. We've been testing it in Travis, Williamson, and Harris County. And we've gotten great feedback, and we'll be rolling it out as well for all of our staff. And so I hope that will go a long way to helping them feel more secure.
Is there anything that prevents CPS from personally carrying?
I don't think so. I suppose not, I mean, it's a little cool. I, I don't really use it. I haven't seen that come up since then. The last thing to improve working conditions, of course, is a big ticket item, and that's the modernization of our computer system. The computer system, you know, it's old, it's not user-friendly. Workers feel like they have to enter a lot of different information in a lot of different places. And so in fact, modernization, modernization will update, update this system to better serve the caseworkers, reduce redundancies, be more efficient, decrease kind of repetitive data entry that's going on out there. Those are kind of the big things that we're doing to improve both safety and just working conditions. Now, of course, the other thing that caseworkers mentioned that, that is related to working conditions is supervision, of course. And we're doing any number of things on this supervision front. First and foremost, the biggest thing that we've done in the past year that I've heard from staff really made a difference is the training model that we operate under. Previously, we did about eighty percent classroom and twenty percent field driven training. And we kind of flipped that model, where most of the training occurs on the job in the field with a mentor. And then it's supplemented by classroom training. And this allows our new staff to get a better idea about what they're going to experience, and also to have better connections with a mentor, with a supervisor, who's guiding them through that process. And it's just generally seen as more supportive. Supervising staff will let the staff coming out of training are better prepared, and the staff reporting feel more positive about their job. The University of Texas, Dr. Cynthia Ock, on the school social work is doing an evaluation of this model for us so that we can make adjustments necessary, but also measure, is it really more effective than the previous model? Are we retaining staff longer, are they better prepared for life now? So that's an exciting initiative. Secondly, we also re-did performance evaluations. We heard from staff that there was some feeling that the previous performance evaluation system wasn't fair, was biased, so we worked closely with field staff to develop a new performance evaluation that has been more positively received, allowing, encouraging more accurate analysis from staff. So we also developed a new performance evaluation for our regional directors, our deputy regional directors and program administrators. This was for our leadership team in order to hold them accountable for workforce management, client outcomes, the general administration of their duties, and community engagement. So we really squarely focused on new job descriptions and new performance evaluations, and what we actually need our management teams to do in order to support staff on the ground. So those are the business. And lastly, we are re-doing supervisory training. We're working with the supervisory supervisors across the state to ask them what they would need to better, be more successful in their first years of supervising. And they've been working with us on developing a new training that will roll out in January. And, and also looking at what training we need to do for our level management team that will better support them in critical thinking strategically and equally well. And then lastly, he, that's staff saying, recently he did his pay and benefits. So several things happened in the legislature, thank you, allowed us to clean up every time balances two-hundred-and-forty out. And that was from what we were doing, went down to two-hundred-and-forty. So that gave workers more of the money that they were earning in their pocket. We also have low salary pay in some areas of the state where it's hard for us to hire. And we've seen that that's gone a long way, we've been able to reduce turnover in those areas. And then lastly, we are distributing performance-based merits that we received during the last session. We also are working on the study of the University of Houston to look at the overall structure of our compensation as it currently stands to make sure that we're using it in the best way possible.
And I think that's important to be a part of the conversation, because when I hear, as a business owner, I'm a lawyer, but as a business owner, when I hear people are leaving because of benefits and pay, that equates to me, they're leaving for what they view as a better opportunity. And how can we create, it's very difficult, and I'm not sure I have the answer, from a government agency, you know, bureaucracy, how do you create opportunity that they perceive as opportunity? So if I work hard, or if I pound through this difficult time or this large, you know, caseload, how do I get past that and get into a better spot? And a lot of times with government jobs, we don't really offer that. I mean, we give everybody across the board, you know, this guy's going to get a raise, or it's based on tenure, or whatever else. But I can't imagine personally, and I'm built different than a lot of people, but it would be so demoralizing for me to look and say, the only way that I can get a better opportunity is by outlasting that person that's been there forever and is never going to get fired, and never going to leave, and it's only going to get easier. So how do we, how do we break that and provide hopefully the incentives, we can come up with something? But I, you know, I want, I want to get creative on this, like, hey, if you do your job good, good, you might not just get a pay increase, but we promise you're going to have one less case at all times. And, you know, so your workload goes down, or something creative like that. But we hear it all the time in this committee, whether it's on roads, or healthcare, or whatever else, that, that pay and benefits are important, and they are. But let's not forget what the root of that is, is for most people, they're making those decisions based on a better opportunity for advancement. So we need to provide those kind of parameters too for them.
And I think especially when you're talking about such demanding work, that, right, if there's a pay while the couch is being lowered, there'd be less demanding work for higher paid workers.
Well, heck, if I go out and I work my tail off, and I have twenty cases, and I go and I work my tail off, what's probably going to happen to me? They're going to put a larger caseload on me, because I can handle it better than the last one. So I have no incentive to work hard. And then you start getting into a situation where the people who are advancing and not losing their minds are the ones that are doing just enough not to get fired. And we're punishing the person who is going out and proactively trying to power through a tough situation. And typically, you know, governments, bureaucracies just say, oh, there's, there's a strong horse, put some more on him, you know? And, and we burn them out. And so I just don't want us to mess this up and say it's just about one thing. It's a combo of a lot of things, I think.
Well, and I think, I think that's what I was trying to say, though, that all the areas of the background towards job satisfaction, the safety, the working conditions, the supervision, and the pay. And they told us, this is an array of things that we can look at to address holistically the issues that are how are we supposed to lead this work? Because the people that come in the door to do this work are very mission-driven, and they really care about children and families. So we just have to find the right combination, create the right environment, the right support, the right supervision, the right everything to keep them. It's very rewarding work.
Yeah, I, I think we need to figure out how to incentivize good outcomes. You know, where it's not just a number, but most of these people are getting involved. My sister's got her master's degree in social work, and she deals with this stuff all the time in Alaska, actually. And it just beats people down. It beats people down unless you can remember what got them involved in it in the first place, was I want to make a difference. I want to change people's lives. And it's almost like the bureaucracy involved with all of this just sucks that out of people. And makes it about something that it wasn't originally. Go fix it. I think I've got a question.
I really will.
Thank you for your testimony.
Well, I, I, I don't have a, maybe more of a comment. I agree with my colleague a hundred percent. From a business perspective, you're right, man, they work hard, they get more work, and then they don't, and the pay's the same, right? So that's not fair. But I want to shift on something else. The other one is impact modernization. I think that's going to be huge for it, because that's a lot of stress. I'm a, I'm a foster parent, right? I was in CASA for a number of years, and then we adopted our boys, and, and I'm a foster parent. And one of the things that I really feel bad, not just for CPS, but for me as a foster parent, is that tons of paperwork, I mean, it takes hours. And I'm a busy guy, I work, I run a company, and while I've got a little more time sitting there, and I got a sign here, initial here, name, address, phone number, again on another document that I've just put it on ten other documents. It's, you know, that's a lot of redundant information just over and over. We have to fix that, because as a foster parent right now, you know, I've got an election coming up, right? And then I had just recently did the adoptions. We could probably do another foster child something, but right now, I have, right now, it's, we can't, because I got too much stuff, and that's just a, not so much the kids, the kids we can handle, we enjoy doing that. And I've been blessed to have a house to do that. It's the paperwork and all that junk that comes with it that, that's more, you know, that's a deterrent more than anything else. That needs to be fixed. If we can get where somebody just has all the documentation spit out on a computer, we have the technology to do that. It just needs to get done, and CPS workers would love that. Because I, I, because I know a lot of CPS workers, they tell me they're up all night just making sure all these documents are in order, all these pa, and then inevitably, they call me back, Mr. Luhan, we got to come back, you got to sign this paper and fill this out and do this. And it's, it's, we got to fix that, that's a big, big point, that's all.
Trying to see if government is not efficient.
Yeah.
I have a quick follow-up question on, talk a little bit more about, you touched on a little bit your continuing education and training. I mean, how often does someone go through training?
So in, in order to, workers can move, as they, as they get increased time with the agency, they can be certified to be go from a child protective special one to a two, to a three, to a four. And in order to reach each of those, it's not, it's not just about the amount of time that you've been there, it's also about achieving certain competencies and completing certain training so that you can take more complex cases, have more advanced special features. So there's a number of training aspects, you know, just continual throughout the year. And at each level, the longer you've been there, the more complex material.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Thank you so much, appreciate it. Next, we'll call county attorney Renee Mueller. State your name and who you represent for the record, please.
My name is Renee Mueller, I'm a Washington county attorney, and it's part of my responsibility to represent CPS in the cases that are in Washington county. I don't know exactly what you want to hear from me, because I don't, there wasn't a question that we specifically wanted to address in this particular area. So if you want to start with questions, that's fine. Or would you like to hear some of the problems that I have seen?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. I was county attorney in Washington county from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand, and now I'm in Washington county attorney again. From two thousand thirteen, and this is my fourth year in this first term. In this new opportunity to work with CPS, I have seen five different caseworkers in the conservatorship unit alone. So that's meaning that I'm getting a new caseworker in that conservatorship unit every time, every year, okay? And what that does is that we have twelve months in which to get this case to a resolution. That's slowing us down a little bit, because that person now has to be brought up to speed. That person has to introduce themselves to the family, to the children, to the CASA, to the attorneys. And all of that is slowing us down. So whatever can be done to keep these people in their jobs a little bit longer would certainly help us. Because if, if we can't get this case resolved in that twelve-month period, then we have to have an extension for six months. And what that means is we're going to be paying those court-appointed attorneys for those children and for those parents six more months. Also, I see that training needs to be improved, especially for those that are working in the investigation unit. In order to prevail at that adversary hearing where we have to prove up that affidavit, we need cooperation. And when I first got in there, that seemed to be a place that was really lacking. The worker felt if they came in and said it, then that was law. Well, that's how it used to be for law enforcement, but that has changed, and it's changed for these CPS workers. So I need to see more training for those investigators so that they can get the information to cooperate in their hearing and what their needs are.
Can I ask just a quick question?
Yes, sir.
What do you think has made it not, what has changed? I think that's a good change, where I just heard that it's not just automatic, and that we need to go through the due process. But what do you think has forced that change?
I think your public servants are losing credibility in the community. And I think CPS is getting locked into that. Also, I feel that the hotline is a problem for, from here, for us in Washington county. The hotline, what that allows people to do is call in anonymously and report child abuse. The children need to be protected, and people need to be able to report that abuse. But what is happening is what I see is it being abused. People are calling in anonymously, making stuff up, telling lies, trying, the parents are calling on each other if they're in a custody battle. Grandparents are calling because they want the child taken away from that parent, and they want the child given to them. I think if those people would have to give us their name, their date of birth, their social security number, and where they live, and so that if the, what they're telling us could not be substantiated, that we could come back on them, I think that our investigators would have a lot more time to do the job, get the cooperation we need in the cases that are urgent. Because I can go out there right now, call CPS and every one of you, and you're going to be investigated, just because I got tired of sitting here.
What I've, I've often thought about a scenario, just like what you said, but then also throwing in the caveat of, it's, it's a, you know, you can privately report this stuff, but if it's found out to be false, then it becomes public of who it was. Because, you're right, I have, I have no recourse at all. And, and typically, you know, especially someone, you know, if, if I had CPS come to my door because of a, of a random complaint from someone that I didn't even know, guess what I would do? I would lawyer up. So I would get lawyers, and I would, I would spend a bunch of money trying to figure this out. I have no recourse against the state, and I don't know whoever did it. So I, I mean, you literally could just bankrupt, I mean, I've heard of horror stories about, I mean, it happens in elections more often than you would think, too. It's crazy.
And, and we have these CPS workers that are very... And, and we have these CPS workers that are very conscientious and if a child is being hurt or injured or not being taken care of, they want to know about it. But they're wasting their time investigating these allegations that are just being made up for retaliation or retribution or for, for some other reason. And I think also if we knew who they were, then we could ask them to come in and testify because if that caseworker goes out there and says, okay, we've had an allegation that you're using drugs in front of your kids, will you take a drug test to prove that wrong? And that person says no. Then what they do is they come to me and we file a case, uh, requesting for aid and investigation. So we bring these people into court if we can even get them served and the judge then says, you know, we have this allegation, will you take a drug test for me? And they say no. Well, then the judge is going to have to decide based upon that anonymous tip because we couldn't find any other cooperation.
So they never face their appeals attorney?
Right. I'd like to bring those people in that made that allegation so at least I can call somebody to the stand and say, this is what this person said, Your Honor, this is what we're basing it on.
So are we saying there are no
They're being prosecuted.
Yes.
Are, are we saying there are no consequences for making an anonymous call that is, that is knowingly false?
I don't know that one has ever been prosecuted, ever.
I don't know what you're charging them on. I'm a pro, I prosecute misdemeanor cases and I don't know whether we're gonna do false report. I'm not sure that works because it has to be a false report to a peace officer. So I don't know what you're, and that's just a class B.
How much would that cut down on workload on these caseworkers?
Yes.
I'm, I'm curious, do we have any idea what, uh, what, do you know how many might be false allegations?
I do not know that because I only get involved to the point where they need assistance from the court, aid in investigation, or we need a follow-up.
I mean, I would love to know the stats on, if somebody here does or we need to look into it, but I mean.
I would like to, too. I, I implore you to help find a solution.
And I would ima, I would imagine, too, for the caseworker's mental state of, you know, if it was a false allegation, that's probably gonna be somebody that, you know, I mean, I can tell you right now, if one came to my house, I would break them through the coals in my own defense. And that four caseworker making thirty-six thousand dollars a year wouldn't know what hit him by the time I was there. And they probably shouldn't have ever been there in the first, you know what I mean?
Well, I have heard, and I mean, cut you off, but I have heard cases where they have received multiple calls on one particular mother doing drugs in front of her children. And finally, after the third call, um, the, the, investigating one, nothing could be substantiated. They investigated another, nothing could be as substantiated. When that third call came in, the mother refused to cooperate and I can't blame her for that. You know, when she, she's had a clean drug test for the last two times and now here it is again, so, you know. Those are, and then the one issue that we're facing here in Washington County, I don't know if it's particular to us, but we don't have any foster care in Washington County. So therefore, when the attorney allotted them is required to go visit that child, they're having to travel long distances and that's affecting our budget because we have to pay them that time. Also, we're having, we're seeing an increase in children that are hard to place, they're older, uh, they've been through some tragic events or they have some mental issues, we're, we can't seem to find placements for them and the children are actually sleeping in our CPS office. And so our CPS workers are staying there, spending the night in the CPS office with those children. So, um, those are issues that I see just here in Washington County.
How often is that happening there?
It's happening pretty, uh, often right now because we are, we've got a couple of children that are older, thirteen or fourteen, some of them have been through some tra, uh, traumatic events. One young lady, her mother was killed by her father and, um, she's been bounced around to ants and, uh, she has some behavior problems, which she can understand and, uh, she's hard to control. And then we have one of them that, uh, her parents don't want her because her, uh, she turned in her father, um, as, as a drug dealer and that was substantiated, but she did that because he took away his cell phone. So well, now the mother has taken the side of the father and we have no place to go with that child and she's about thirteen or fourteen now.
Um. Chairman Coleman said it earlier in regards to what someone else said, but we're never gonna fix these problems, we're just managing it properly. That's been so frustrating.
And one thing you said, well, if you do something the way they're doing with EMS, but one thing that's different here is those people are calling EMS asking for help. We're going out and being the police and finding these problems, they're not coming to us. So I don't know how we would get to them, you know, before we actually get to CPS. So I don't, I thought about that question and asked it and I don't have any.
Well, I don't know if it's necessarily us visiting the home, but it's, it's talking more about mental health, it's talking about drug rehab in a number of ways before, you know, I mean, it may not even involve the kids at some point, but.
Other questions? Thank you. Other questions for the panel? If not, um, public testimony? Have anybody?
If you don't mind, I'll jump in here.
Judge, Breeden?
Yeah, I, I've turned in for him and I, uh, John Breed from Washington County Judge. Uh, let me throw a couple of things out. A while ago, when you were making the comment about the lawyer and up, what happens in these cases so often is appointed attorneys. And what you have to understand, uh, in, in, and what we're dealing with is we're required today to appoint attorneys much sooner in the whole process than we ever had to before. Uh, and, and that's come down from our Texas Supreme Court saying, here's, here's what you need to do. We have many, many cases of multiple attorneys because each child has to have one, each parent has to have one, uh, can, the grandparents get involved, has to have one. And we've had, and, and I'm gonna give you the worst case one that we've had recently, is we had the case of mom and three kids by three different dads. And so we have three dads, mom, three kids, and then we had a grandparent involved, so we had a grandparent. And oh, by the way, we had an appointed attorney for one of the dads in the district court for a felony that was kind of going on at the same time. And mom had a misdemeanor that was going on in county court at law at the same time. And when you take a look at the number of appointed attorneys that we were paying in this one case was substantial and, and, and that's part of, of our budget, but it's one of those things from the state saying, counties, here's what you have to do. You have to run our court systems, but here's what you have to do. And that's coming out of our budget. What we're seeing is year after year, we're going above the budget. Uh, we just happened to do county court at law this morning in a budget workshop. And we've looked at the fact that appointed attorneys has exceeded the annual budget for twenty sixteen already after six and a half months. Uh, it, it, it's, it's impossible to budget for it and yet we're having to deal with it. And, and the hard part is we don't have any recourse. I mean, there's no way to control it, we're just paying. Whatever happens, we're just paying. And so, uh, to me, as we deal with the CPS problem, uh, you know, yeah, we've got to think about those kids. Yeah, we've got to think about our, our CPS workers, but goodness gracious, folks, I'm, I'm in charge of the budget and, and, uh, it, it's, it's killing us and, uh, that's not being talked about.
Questions? Thank you, Judge. Uh, other public testimony on this one? If not, we'll move to the final one, um, which deals with cybersecurity. You've heard, um, on several panels today, a local connection that I have to the people testifying. You're about to hear about as local as it gets. Mr. Robert Van Dresser is my father-in-law, um, and, uh, and Doug Beavers is here as well. They're gonna come up and talk about cybersecurity. So whoever wants to start, come up to the microphone and state your name and, uh, who you represent. No questions outside of official business for this guy, I'll tell you that.
I am Robert Van Dresser. I'm the president of Airplexus Incorporated. Um, we're an IT consulting firm that does consulting for several small, medium-sized counties around the state, municipal government, school districts, et cetera. I wanted on the record that Mr. Schubert is an excellent son of a gun and we appreciate him being a part of that. Um, I know that we're here to talk some about cybersecurity in general and while that is an interesting topic, I think the more important thing is to talk about how to control necessarily state mandated, um, policies which affect small counties in the state of Texas. Many small counties basically treat ITs at half a dollar. Um, county dollars are, are very small, um, paved roads are a much more visible solution to those dollars. Uh, we find over and over again in smaller counties that their infrastructure implementations, their network implementations are just lacking and that's mostly because there is just nobody there to help. Um, I think it would be a great thing if the state had some way of creating something more, if nothing more than just a help desk for these people. Usually what we find in smaller counties is the IT person is the person that knew how to format a Word document for somebody and it's like, hey, you're now the IT director. Um, and these people work very hard, don't get me wrong. Um, they are trying their, their level best to implement solid solutions for their county. They just don't have the tools or resources necessary to, necessarily to get that done. Um, you know, something that the state could maybe do is get an IT guy in at the council of governance around that would be, you know, for a five county, a seven county region, a resource for this person to be able to ask a question, get an opinion, anything like that. I spend the majority of my day on the phone with an IT person, just wanting a little information to know how this is gonna work or we've just been required to implement this solution, can we even do that with what we own now? In smaller counties, you will find that the bulk of IT infrastructure exists at the sheriff's department. Um, and this is mainly because of Tlets requirements. Um, all sheriff's departments undergo Tlets audits, you know, to make sure that we can still have dispatching and all that kind of thing. They have specific requirements about, you know, how old are your computers, what operating systems are they running, what kind of switches do you have, do you have any kind of firewall in, you know, how is your network set up? And really, this is many small counties interface with state IT, so to speak. Um, so, you know, it becomes our job to make sure that counties are comfortable. I've done dozens of Tlets audits, the guys really aren't that scary, they just wanna make sure that we're securing the information in a proper, best practice.
So on the, on those folks that are, that are doing those audits, are they also, in your mind, the, the way that we apply help as well? Like, do they not just become the auditor, but also
Absolutely, and, and yeah.
Pay ID snap troubleshooting?
Right, don't get me wrong, they, it's not like, you know, the big bad state guy shows up. Most of them are very, very nice and quite helpful and what they usually do before the actual audit is they do site visit. And then they come down and they say, okay, I'm looking at stuff and here, you know, I would fix that and, you know, let me see that, let me see that firewall code, loops, I would maybe fix some of this. And so it's, it's a back and forth and it is, it is, it's certainly a relationship with the state. Um, I'm not saying that they just come in and
They're not passing, they're not passing out fines.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, you know, you, you don't wanna necessarily disregard their advice.
Sure.
Um, they have very stringent rules, you know, procedures that to make sure that their data is secure. Um, and so a lot of resources are spent at that end of the county.
I, I, you know, I'm, Chairman would probably agree with this, I'm probably as far right as you could possibly get in Texas legislation. But I gotta tell you, it blows my mind to think of how many different entities have personal information on, you know, any one of us. And the fact that, like you said, the IT guy could be a guy who must have had a format Word or worked with Excel and, and it's crazy. And I, I'm, I'm a Fourth Amendment, get rid of the databases guy, but I understand there's some information that we have to have and the fact that we haven't taken seriously protecting that information, I think people don't even have a concept of, of what is available. Like whether it's the DMV or, you know, these cameras are everywhere now and, I mean, it's just, we don't know, nobody knows.
Well, and it's, and in smaller counties, you have to remember that there may or may not be even any public-facing personal information. Um, a lot of these counties don't light up web servers that allow you to do things and if they do, they're usually, at least the state does give them resources to be able to light that website up on a state server. So that now we have a staff of IT people, IT people at least managing the server and making sure it's secure.
My understanding is, is that there are literally cities in Texas and maybe in counties that don't even have a website.
Absolutely. Absolute true. And it, it goes back to our resources thing. Um, again, you know, trying to convince county judges and, and commissioners courts that, that the expenditure is, is a necessary one. And most are very open to it, once that, once it's explained to them the importance of it. If you can get on the internet and I can get my email, most people think that IT is functioning. Um, well, that's, that is a measure of it, but it is not necessarily a good measure of it. Um, there are a lot of things that really need going behind the scenes to make sure that it functions properly, securely, reliably. So that's where I can be. And, and interfacing with all of these counties, they all have the same issue and it's, it's basically not always even a monetary resource issue, it's, it's just a human knowledge resource issue. If they had a place where they could call with people who would give them best practice information, I think that's awesome.
I have a question. Um, I, I think that would be good, but what's preventing counties from getting together and saying, let's have a, because in today's technology, managed services is where it's at.
Absolutely.
You know, and you can work remotely and you can set up your best practices for all this group of counties and maybe that guy get that state training that we need, but it wouldn't take much. I don't think we would, I personally don't think you need an IT, especially in the smaller counties, bigger cities, yes. The bigger counties with the big cities, yes, but for counties that are in rural areas, somebody that just knows technology and, and, and just has a roadmap, okay, here's our roadmap, just, and that's the biggest thing, having a roadmap, having it all mapped out, here's what it's gonna look like, here's best practices, and then runs it for the several county, is that, am I speaking out of line on if that's doable or not? Because, uh, to me, it makes perfect sense to do that.
It does make sense. And I will tell you that we have, in an effort to overcome some of the shortcomings, for instance, um, juvenile probation departments in the state of Texas use a piece of software called JCS. Um, it's hosted at the state, however, requires a, um, pretty significant VPN tunnel to make that happen, to make it secure. Well, most
Yeah, but you set, but you set up that
So what we do is since we have the infrastructure in our offices to make that happen
Right.
We just connect them to our offices and then securely send them to the state.
Yeah, now you have five, six counties.
And now we save them the headache of having to manage a VPN, connected router and all this other kind of thing and yet we can maintain security. So yes, we do do things like that. Um, you know, it comes down to cooperation amongst counties, you know, there are, there are counties that cooperate better than other neighborhood counties, obviously. Um, but I don't, I don't think that it's a bad solution.
The judge is laughing at it.
I don't think that's necessarily a bad solution at all. I mean, absolutely. More and more data is moving into the cloud, um, basically we need an internet and then we can do a ZI thing.
Yeah, I thi, I think if they got together, whiteboarded this thing and say, here's the services and here's the things that we need, the basics, because there's gonna be some, people are gonna wanna hold whatever application personally, okay, that's fine, you want, your county wants to hold that fine, but there's a basic ones that you can whiteboard and say, all of these, we're gonna agree on, and then boom.
I guess, and I agree with you that that needs to be the model, but let me just caution us on this, too, uh, because it depends on what we're talking about. This chart specifically says personal information and, you know, I don't know what that means, but does that mean health records? Does that mean things that you may not want a third party to have access to and that we shouldn't just be contracting out a service that has, so I think it depends on what, like what you're talking about, absolutely, we could do all day long, but if we get into HIPAA stuff and all kinds of whatever else.
Totally agree.
Then we're talking about licensing, you know, third-party vendors and all kinds of, I don't know.
Right, and obviously, obviously certain man things can't draw up. Right, and obviously, obviously, certain mandates can control others. I mean, they all have to be taken into account. Um, and the information would have to be looked at on a case-by-case basis to see what that information is, if it's actually, if it has the ability to be moved up into a cloud-based operation, even a core set of servers somewhere, so. Yeah, I think that's an awesome solution, too.
And this is one of the things I wanted to talk about. We, last session, a bill came up in a separate committee that dealt with, um, inputting information on certain inmates and those sort of things, um, to a system. And my response was, okay, a larger county might have a large workforce of IT people and people that can do those sort of inputs. Well, I think, now I started thinking about my counties, most of my counties, if they have anyone, it might be a part-time IT person that does another job as well. And so, one of the things I just wanna point out here is the fact that when you start looking at these sort of items, the bracketing of populations is very important. Because we in rural Texas don't have the resources and manpower, and even if we did have the resources and manpower, we might not have the knowledge power to make something like that happen. We're fortunate in Burleson County to have Aerplexus that helps out with that. But a lot of rural counties have no one in the county that would understand how to set up a firewall system and maintain that firewall system. That's one of the big issues we face in rural Texas, is that we just don't have those items, that information, a lot of times, at our, at our grasp.
And I, and, and, yeah, I, I know that's a problem, but, you know, what happens to, and again, it depends on, I'm not trying to be dramatic, it depends on what kind of personal information we're talking about. But I have constituents who, you know, drive through here and if someone gets arrested or goes to the hospital and all of a sudden, you know, a little small county, for instance, has all that information, you know, there's some things that have to be uniform across the state. And I would argue that maybe handling personal information, depending on what it is, is something that we could justify, um, subsidizing for the smaller counties, because, you know, when it comes to protecting our rights, that's what we should be doing to begin with.
And you should have that same protection over what part of the state you're in.
Exactly.
Your principal personal information should be just as secure.
Like, oh, if I'm in Tarrant County, then, you know, I know the website's secure, but and hope Brennan, you know, never gets hold of my whatever.
And that's, and that's my point, exactly, saying, saying that, fine, if, if mandates need to come about, they need to come about. Just bear in mind that how it affects the smaller county without the resources of a Tarrant, a Tarrant County, a Harris County, whatever, that, and, and.
We're starting from zero a lot of places.
Exactly, you know, weigh that against how, how the rollout will work. If the mandate needs to exist, it needs to exist. Just consider it in the rollout phase that, okay, well, Tarrant County's gonna light that up, you know, how is San Jacinto County gonna light that up? Um, so, there's, there's just varying degrees of implementation expertise across the county.
See, and I think it's a little less risky than kind of what you're saying a little bit, only because that information, that data's already been collected, there's already ways to put it out. However big city gets it, this county gets it. They're gonna get in the same way, so the same things you're gonna, you're not gonna collect, unless this county wants to create its own server and do their own, but then you have trouble doing that. But, so you, yeah, so you wanna, you'd use the same systems and then unless there's county-level things that they wanna do for their own, have their own database for their own population, and that's different. But if it's for state services and things like that, I don't, I don't see how, what, how would you create a new pipe, it would be the same as everybody else.
Let me just give an example, I'm thinking out of my head. In the last session, we did HB eleven, which was a border security bill. And what we did is we created a center down by the border that took local police and sheriffs and constables and state troopers and combined them all into one nerve center. And I don't know what systems they're using for that, but I would imagine that they're going to the lowest common denominator so that the other people can have access, because I know the constable, you know, office down in some obscure county is not gonna have the infrastructure that the state troopers will have access to. So, you know, especially when we start talking about, and again, it depends on, I might be saying all this for, for no reason, but when I see the words personal information, you know, I'm starting to think undercover people, I'm starting to think all kinds of stuff that could literally turn someone's life upside down. That doesn't need to be just to help as a person at that point. But I, what I'm hearing from your testimony is basically, this could be, this is a serious problem for counties, and if we come up with some kind of mandate state solution, then we need to take into account the fact that a lot of places will be building from zero and cannot sustain the financial burden of.
Absolutely, yeah, you know, it would just be, it would be a shame to make assumptions on infrastructure, existing infrastructure. Um, because sometimes there is some, sometimes there isn't, so.
We thank you, interest in this stuff.
More questions?
Other questions?
Actually, I have a comment. Uh, Mr. Chairman? What's interesting about this is that this charge has been given to every committee. And the jurisdiction of the agencies under that committee, they're having this very same discussion. And I think what's happening here, sort of like, if you don't keep up with Mac, whatever it is, Windows ten, then you have to be learning all the time. You can't go back and relearn it to do, and, and I think they're trying to figure out, how do we deal with this big picture and get a lay of the land of what this may actually cost in terms of securing data and creating, uh, uh, a, a standard? Uh, because this, this is now the real world.
Sure.
And, and, and it wasn't as much as it was, uh, it's more in the real world now than it was two years ago. Uh, and the data breaches at, you know, just, you know, somebody said, targets data? You know, I mean, you just start thinking, it's target, come on, you, you know.
Absolutely, cyber threats are real.
Right. So, I'm glad we have this charge, because this is gonna be with us forever, forever. And we're trying to get out ahead of it. That's the real deal, to figure out how to keep it from damaging people personally. I think that's, that's what, this is a, why this is a great exercise in getting the lay of the land in local governments, but also in our state, uh, agencies. We don't know what the.
Well, I hope, God, you're right, and we're trying to get ahead of it, we're not already behind.
We're behind.
Who knows?
I'm, I'm gonna tell you, the reason why I know we're behind is because every, every committee wouldn't have gotten a charge like this if we weren't already behind the A-ball. So, seriously, in some places than in others. Uh, but the state, if the federal government, generally what happens is somebody's gonna lead on this stuff. If somebody has to, and I think the state government is a good place, uh, to, to lead on things that most people don't wake up every day thinking about. And it's not sexy. You know, we do a lot of this. Yeah, no. So, so I think it, 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 I'm, after watching, what, what got me was the use, China's use of, uh, cyber breaking cyber security at a war aspect. And I said, oh my God, you know, I wouldn't have thought about that. You know, I thought about it, but I didn't internalize it, I didn't really appreciate it. Um, and so, it, it, it's a big deal. And it may, we're behind, but we're not at, I don't think, we may not be at crisis yet.
I don't believe so.
But, but the deal is, if we don't, this is a thing, it's sort of like math. You have to start at the beginning in math and keep going all the way to.
And it is ongoing.
Right, it's ongoing.
And we'll only be more pervasive as we move along through the technology lifecycle, so.
Chairman, I almost feel like we shouldn't even be talking about it and giving them a leg up.
Well, I mean, who ever heard of malware? You know, when the internet first opened, there was no security on it. You could pull up stuff now, you can hardly pull up because it's so slow, and you pull it up then.
I thought all my fantasy football posts were safe back in the day.
No, none of your fans, Jonathan, none of your fantasy football posts are safe. You know, for a while there with credit card, I stopped using credit cards, I just went got cash. Because I was just like, you know, I don't, I don't care really, but, but the point is, somebody's actually looking at this?
Well, but you know, and then on the flip side though, I look at, there's a lot of gloom and doom, but then I've seen the security with the, the evolution of security.
Absolutely.
Computer, I'm telling you, where we say that, oh, and the future's gonna get worse, I kinda see optimistic, where I think we're gonna be tightening up things and it's gonna be a lot more, it's gonna be a lot more difficult to come in, a lot of the systems. And the way they're being designed now, where, where you're VPNing and you're putting portals in and you're controlling the data, and then you got sniffers out, like, any activity comes up, bam, you're on top of it, those type of things are exciting in the industry, and those are some really cool things that are, that are on the horizon, that are gonna, I think it's gonna help us, especially from a government perspective, it'll help a lot.
Absolutely, and what's really happening is that in the design of new products and services, it's at the forefront of the design process. Instead of rolling out a product and then going, oh, we forgot about the security part, it's, it's one of the things, the first thing that gets done. So, so, yeah, I mean, I'm totally optimistic and, and I'm, I know.
You're gonna work yourself out of it.
A network and glue person, um, I know how networks, I've worked, I've seen networks work, I've designed networks, that can be very secure. So, so, yeah, I don't, I don't think security as a whole is a giant problem. I think that we need to make sure, though, that when we mandate security things, that we make sure that the lesser of all of these have the resources to get those implemented as well, so. Thank y'all. Mr. Chairman, me, appreciate y'all listening to me, I could ramble for hours.
No, it's very helpful. Um, you know, I started at this, working as a legislator when we created DIR. Okay, so that ought to tell you something. And, uh, so, the reality is, most of us ain't got time to think about that. We just wanna make sure that, uh, people's information is protected. And we don't wanna know the year 2000, which, you know, nothing happened. So, so it's between hype and what, what really is taking care of that information you're talking about. Um, and I, I, a- again, it, it's just one of those things that the public needs to know that their information is protected. That's just, that's all I can think about.
Or we don't need to take it.
Right, or what, or that.
We don't take it if we can't protect it.
My mother really loves PCs, and she starts talking to me about this stuff and I go, hey, you know, come on, I have a BlackBerry. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Um, further questions, public testimony?
I didn't sign up for this, but if you don't mind, I'll make a comment.
Judge?
John Breeden, Washington County Judge. Just to give you an idea, uh, when I became judge, uh, six years ago, uh, we didn't have an IT department, we had a part-time, or consultant that we employed, part-time, uh, that did the IT. And the previous judge, uh, had the administrative assistant print each email that came in and put on the desk. And, and so, that was six years ago, and, and we do have an IT department today and there's a number of things, but, but counties are being brought into this because, uh, e-filing is dictated by the, uh, Supreme Court, and I'm not sure y'all are aware of it, if you're not an attorney, you may not be aware of it, but, uh, the Supreme Court said, from this point forward, all the civil case stuff has to be e-filed. And they started with the large counties and said, you have to do it this year, and I have to count back, it was like 2013. And then some of the other fairly large counties, uh, 2014, et cetera, this year, or maybe it was last year, we got involved and we were being required to. And next year, I believe it is, is all the small counties have to be on board. So, and that's been an ongoing and moving thing that's being dictated, and gee, you've heard me say unfunded mandates, mandates a number of times today, don't you? But that's being dictated, and so the counties are having to get on board with this because of the e-filing requirement, just in the, in the, in the corpse's, uh, system. But we're finding that it's also required in so many other things. I know that the financial package that we use in Washington County is really, really, really old and really, really slow. And, and, and work, we, it works behind, and we're seeing things from a couple of months ago on a continuing basis. We have just purchased a, a brand-new, up-to-date package that we're in the midst of converting data and whatever, and hopefully by the first of the year, we'll be in the new thing and we'll see real-time stuff. So, we're, we're moving and we're changing.
So, excuse me, what is that, what did you buy, or did you say?
We bought Tyler, uh, Financial, but we didn't buy their whole package, just the financial package. But we looked at a number of things, and while they tend to be the more expensive, they also tend to have better support and training and, and the capability of doing what we needed to be done.
They're always expensive. Tyler, SAP.
Yeah, it, it really is.
Wait a second, you're a fire, you're a firefighter, police officer, jailer, computer tech, foster parent, you're super.
Don't get him in a phone booth, he might come out with a different uniform on in a phone booth.
I'm honored to have a lot of my own friends.
I'm more impressed, more impressed than.
I'm serious. I'm qualified for this.
It's a situation where all counties are having to get on board, is what I'm trying to emphasize to you. And, 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 and to be perfectly honest, uh, I, I don't know that it's fair the way it's, it is, because some of those small counties and some of the situation, and, and I know that, that we actually were having to be ahead scheduled because of our location here, we have some Houston attorneys that will pick up clients here, and they are used to e-filing a couple of years ago, and we had to have that capability in order for them to do so. So, we actually got on board and began to use it a little bit and, and bring our folks on, and, and because of that, and, and there's so many other things that we're doing, including scanning records and, and, and we're doing things that we've not ever done before, and we're coming along, and, and security is a huge deal. Uh, and, and we've, we certainly looked at that, and hopefully we, we've got a handle on it and all. But what I'm trying to indicate is, is, is the fact that, yes, for small counties, it's devastating, and, and I can't even imagine those small counties, particularly like West Texas Permian Basin, that their appraisals are down thirty percent this year, and, and they're already dealing with that kind of budget, and though, by the way, you've gotta have your e-filing done now. Uh, I, I don't know how, they're gonna do it, but, uh, that, that's just to give y'all an idea of what the, what the, what the marketplace is or the flavor of what, what the counties are having to deal with.
Mr. Chairman? Uh, generally, uh, Judge, do you, do you all use the clearinghouses through the associations like the municipal league and through others, uh, to purchase software and hardware to reduce the cost to everyone, so that it wouldn't, the cost would actually drop?
We, we use DIR for stuff.
Okay.
If that's what you're asking.
I, I.
But, but to be perfectly honest, we, we were, in fact, I had a lot of people.
Are we still trusting DIR's clearinghouse?
Somewhat, yes, sir.
Okay, that's, I'm just asking.
We went through a year and a half process, I had people complaining about how slow we were. But we looked at a lot of things, we then chose like four that we brought in and had them complete, do complete demonstrations for us. Then we took all the information, we analyzed, and I say, we, we had different people with different skills and the users analyzed, and then we chose two, two of those to come back and do further demonstrations and answer questions. It took us a year and a half to make the choice, here's who we're going with. And it was very slow and methodical, and once again, people complained, I just felt like it was, it wasn't an emergency, we do it now, so we did it in a very slow and methodical way. And I think we've made a great choice, and I, and I, I think once it's rolled out, people will say, wow, that, that's wonderful, I'm certainly hoping so. But I think that we'll make better decisions with real-time data than we haven't had the capability to in the past.
Well, I, I'm really trying to understand, uh, I sort of understand, don't get me wrong, but the, the challenge we had with DIR last session and Health and Human Services, uh, the question, I, I didn't realize until that happened, that they were the clearinghouse for everybody, just about everybody. And the city of Houston uses DIR to do its procurements. And, and so, it was much bigger than just the state and just one agency in terms of the importance of, of DIR. And I just don't, I don't remember what we did, we do anything about it or not, I, I just really don't know. Uh, but, but, but I think it's important to understand, uh, the procurements of hardware, software, which is like procuring professional services, as opposed to buying a widget.
Well, one, one of the things that DIR does is, of course, they did this stuff out. You have to have whatever in order to be listed by DIR. What that gives us the capability of doing is going without putting out these proposals and trying to analyze without the expertise and, 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 and be able to get folks off of DIR. But what we did is we got a number of them and, and we then further analyzed them because we had the time to do so. But if we didn't have time and we need something now, that's what we did. But I know I heard your comment, well, about website. We've had the website for a number of years, and we've tried to further explore and further refine it and whatever, but we're, we're, we're syrup, and, and so, they, they host it, they do everything for us, we're not having to worry about. We're not having to worry about hosting it ourselves, the security of it and all of that. And in fact, when our agenda is posted on a weekly basis for our, our weekly commissioner's court meetings, my assistant sends the agenda and they send back and say, it's posted. And she goes to the site to make sure it's there because sometimes it's not or sometimes something's wrong. And, and, and it gets corrected. But they're the ones doing it and they're the ones that are worrying about the security and I'm not. And that's what we pay for, is so that we don't have to do that.
Yeah, boroughs and counties, what side is also in there.
That's good. I would like to commend you on that because so many people, and this is a, you're a good example of going through that whole process. Because when you're talking about not an application, you're talking about ERP packages that you're gonna be married to. Because once it's implemented and stuff, that's it. It's not something you say, okay, next month I'm gonna switch. No, you're, it puts its technical.
Well, there's enough investment.
Yes.
That you're exactly right. Because we've got something that somebody purchased prior to me being there. And the problem is we've got so much invested, we can't walk away.
Yeah.
And, and, and that's, that's a difficult situation to be in.
And, and the reason I say, because I know in my city, San Antonio, they purchased something really quick, implemented fast. Lawsuits came out of it, paychecks were wrong. But I, I'm a firefighter and my paycheck one day was $15 and 87% direct deposit. I mean, it was, it was a mess. So, that, you guys, you guys did it right.
Al, I, I, boy, that's a tough one. I, I have, I'm on my third of the state agency board. But back a few years ago, I was chairman of the Veterans Commission. And the time that the, the Veterans Employment Folks moved from, from employment, from Workforce Commission to the Veterans Commission. And through that whole transition, I told my folks, I said, you know, there's gonna be hiccups, there's gonna be this. If there's one screw-up we're not gonna do and that's payroll. Payroll is gonna work. And, and I, and if I have to beat you and beat you, payroll is gonna work. And so when we made the move, payroll worked.
Uh, further questions? I, I wanna make sure, Doug Beevers is here from Burleson County as well, wanna make sure, thank you for coming out. If you wouldn't have your opportunity to say anything, if you'd like, that we live the floor to you.
If you're done at this point, you're really.
All right, thank you.
You're right. If it's not done, don't ask for it right away.
Any further questions? If not, uh, Mr. Chairman, I think that makes us adjourned.
Okay. Uh, the House Committee on County Affairs is adjourned subject to the call of the chair.
Thank you, Jim.
No, thank you so much for. Yeah, I appreciate it. Appreciate it, you know. Exactly.